All right. Good evening, everyone. Hopefully you can hear me. Yes. Okay, I saw a thumbs up there. Thank you. Great. So welcome. I believe we have all the trustees in attendance that we are expecting this evening. We have a couple of people out. So at what is this 7:03 PM on August 17th, 2021, I will call to order this meeting of the Netherlands Board of Trustees. Miranda, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Larson.
Here.
Trustee Kooms Ismael.
Here.
Mayor Proton Baumhofer.
Present.
Trustee Danforth.
Here.
Trustee Corvallin.
Here.
And please know for the record that trustee Taylor and trustee apt are absent.
All right. Thank you, Miranda. We have three items on the consent agenda this evening, the usual warrants and minutes and interestingly, or importantly, a contract with our new town administrator, Miranda Fisher. Any trustees have any questions or comments regarding any of the three items on the consent agenda? Or do we have a motion to approve?
I just had a question about the contract. Um, is it the same contract that we had for Karen? Are there any changes?
I think the only changes were very slight, minor ones, and they were, they were just kind of logical ones, like the fact that we had in Karen's contract, we had a thing where she couldn't, she had to wait to notify or give us official notification of her resignation. You know, we've known for a few months, but there was a clause in there that she couldn't actually just submit the letter until like last month. So there are some very minor changes and logical ones, but nothing significant. No.
Just it's a standard contract.
It's a very standard. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Yep. Any questions or a motion?
I am happy to make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Miranda.
Mayor Proton Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Kooms Ismael.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yeah.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
Consent agenda passes. Moving on, we have one public comment on non-agenda items in the packet from Brian Curtis. If anyone else here this evening would like to speak on any item that is not on our agenda, now would be your chance. Please catch our attention in some way and you can have up to three minutes to let us know what you're thinking about. Would anyone like to make a public comment on a non-agenda item? I am not hearing or seeing anyone. So we will move on. And as always, please, if you think of something in the coming weeks, let us know via email or reach out to us in some way. And next on our agenda are informational items, beginning with a municipal court and community safety presentation. I think Miranda, are you going to do a quick intro on this one before we hand over to the judge?
I will do a quick introduction. So recently, myself and Marshall Johns met with our judge and our prosecutor, just to touch base because of the upcoming change in leadership and to see how things were going. And a part of that conversation, Judge Thrower had mentioned that there, it could be beneficial to provide this new board of trustees just a quick presentation on the municipal courts and community safety. So this seemed like a great meeting to do that, especially as we head into the budget season. So I'd like to welcome Judge Thrower and turn it over to him to do a presentation.
Thank you, Miranda. Mayor, members of the Board of Trustees, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. When we chatted, Miranda and I talked about, you know, what would be beneficial to you all? And I had mentioned that I have a presentation that I give at Citizens Academies and other jurisdictions where I serve. I serve in five other municipalities in addition to Netherlands. I promise you, I won't take the whole hour. I'm usually allotted to do this presentation. And for many of you, this may be old hat, but I think it's important to understand the process of municipal court, which I'm going to touch on. And then I'm going to give you some of my thoughts, having been with you all for three years and starting my fourth just this month. So thank you for being here and allowing me to speak this evening. The municipal court in Netherlands, like all municipal courts, is among the most local of law enforcement forums. As such, municipal courts reflect the priorities of the community in terms of safety and attempts to change behavior. It allows us to have a very sort of local view of what's important to the community in terms of safety and how we treat defendants and what our priorities are in the community. And I'm honored to serve six communities in total. They're all very different, and that's part of the attraction of municipal court. And I think that's also part of the reason they're so important, in my opinion. So I'm just going to give an overview of municipal court, what kind of cases they hear, what the process is, and we'll go from there. And again, I promise I'll be thrifty with your time. The scope of services in municipal court is it's a forum for alleged violations of the municipal code. That code are provisions made up and passed by you all. I'm sure you all understand there's differing levels of court, federal, state, and municipal court. Municipal court obviously being the most local. Your police department also has the opportunity, or the option, I should say, of charging violations into state court as appropriate. What is, what are the kinds of cases we see? And I'm going to broadly define them as criminal cases, traffic cases, and other violations such as zoning and licensing issues. It's kind of a misnomer in some ways to say that the Netherlands Municipal Court has a criminal has criminal violations because in essence, Netherlands has decriminalized its code. Jail is not a possible penalty in the Netherlands Municipal Court, other than for direct contempt of court. And in that case, I can impose up to 10 days in the Boulder County Jail. Direct contempt is themes, things like if there's an outburst in court that is offensive to the court or the process or to others in court. That happens rarely, and in my seven years, almost eight on the bench, I think I've never imposed a citation for direct contempt of court, and I hope to keep it that way. The possible penalties in the Netherlands Municipal Court are $2,650 fine or $1,000 to a juvenile. It's rarely, if ever, that high. You all approve. They may fines, fees, and costs on some sort of a regular basis, and I use that in court to impose fines. In addition to fines, I also have the opportunity to suspend some of those fines and impose community service or an educational component as part of sentence. When we conclude our time together, I'll tell you how I feel about sentencing and what I think is important. Obviously, for more serious violations where incarceration or probation may be an appropriate sanction, that's something that the police can decide on the scene when they, when they issue a charging document or make an arrest. The process of municipal court is fairly straightforward. It really has three different components. The first and the one that we spend the most amount of time on are arraignments. We have arraignments in Netherlands once a month. The arraignment is a proceeding in which I or the court advises the defendant of their rights first and foremost. And I do that in a written format that each defendant signs. And I also read an advisement of rights to the defendants. And I usually do that as a group. The rights that I advise people of are, it's the most important part of my job. It's that they have a right to be represented by counsel if they choose. They have a right to contest the charge and require the prosecutor to prove the charge beyond a reason without. They have a right to understand what they've been charged with. They have a right to speedy in public trial. They have a right to tell me whether or not they are a veteran or a serving member of the armed forces. Interestingly enough, legislature passed a law this session, which is the subject to some conversation about whether it applies to municipal court, but in essence, a veteran can remove cases to a specialized veterans court in the state of Colorado. That's pursuant to some recent legislation. All of the rights that I just summarized for you are important and something I take a great deal of pains to make sure people understand. If they don't understand, then we'll take as much time as we need so they do. Because I refuse to proceed or take a plea unless I'm convinced they understand their rights and their options. Most, most folks understand that they have a right to a trial. The trial can be either to the court or to a jury, depending on the charge, even though Netherlands is decriminalized. If the charge carries with it the possibility of jail at state law, the defendant has a right to a jury trial. We've not had a jury trial since I've been the judge in Netherlands. But usually it's just a matter of time before that happens. Juries generally are by default, the number of, the number of jurors are either three or six, defaulting to three. In addition to reading defendants their rights, I, I take some time and explain the charge that's been made against them. That includes telling them in non-traffic cases, the elements of the charge. That is, what does the prosecution have to prove in order to get a conviction? After I advise a defendant of their rights and the nature of the charge, they can, they have several choices at that point. They can meet with the prosecutor. The prosecutor in Netherlands is Avi Rockland. In my view, she's an outstanding prosecutor. She has significant experience as a municipal attorney. And I think she has a very fair way of looking at cases in municipal court with an eye towards changing behavior, which after all, I think is our charter. If they choose to meet with the prosecutor, which most people do, she may offer them a plea bargain. If they accept it, they'll come back into court and tell me that's what they want to do. And if that's what they want to do, we will accept their plea and move on to sentencing, which we'll come back to in just a moment. They don't want to accept the plea or none is offered by the prosecutor, we will go to either taking a plea to the original charge or set the matter for trial. There are circumstances in which I have to make a determination whether or not somebody needs to be appointed counsel. Generally, if jail is not a possible penalty, counsel is not a requirement. However, there are some certain cases where that may be something I have to consider. If the matter goes to trial, that's usually on a different date, usually within 30 days. It's usually the same date as our arraignment date. It's just later in date, in the day rather. Trials generally take less than an hour. The prosecution calls witnesses, usually law enforcement. Defendant has a right to cross-examine anybody that's testifying against them. They also have the right to put on a case or not put on a case. That's totally up to them. At the end of that trial, the court makes findings, and if the defendant is acquitted, they're free to go. If they're found guilty, I impose sentence. I'm coming to the end, I promise. I alluded to the fact that sentencing is something I would talk about, and I'm going to do so now. It is sort of the third phase of the municipal court proceeding. Again, as I mentioned before, jail is not a possible penalty in Netherlands. So we're left with things such as fines and ordering people to go to community service or take some court ordered classes. Those classes generally are either traffic classes. They can be anger management classes. They can make the alcohol and drug classes. In addition, the court can order or, or suggest something like a suspended sentence where a fine might be imposed, but it'll be suspended pending the defendant doing something to earn the reduction in the sentence and the fines such as community service. We have a lot of post-sentence reviews, so if people are supposed to do community service and they don't get it done, they have to come back and hang out with me again. And we see that from time to time. We've saw, we saw that a lot during COVID because people simply couldn't do community service because it wasn't available. So I usually suspended a lot of that community service based on the fact that a defendant showed up, took it seriously, and knew they had obligations to the court. So we were, we were constantly evaluating what was going to make sense in terms of sentence. I believe in evidence-based sentencing. And what that means is what I impose in sentence should serve to correct behavior and not make, make things worse. Oftentimes, if a judge is too harsh in sentencing, it can actually make a defendant not appreciate the system and feel like they're not heard. And that is the polar opposite of what I try to do. The things that the court does not do, we do not provide legal advice to the town. This is the job, the job of the town attorney. And in court issues, the prosecuting attorney, the court does not have jurisdiction over any civil matters except for restitution, which can be, can be ordered as part of sentence. The court does not have jurisdiction over alleged violations of Colorado v. statutes. We only have jurisdiction over the town code. The typical cases we see in the town of Netherlands, we see, it's a pretty good mix in terms of numbers. I don't think these, they break almost evenly. Traffic, that's the typical speeding, careless driving, which is a euphemism for accidents. Failures to stop or yield. We also see a significant number of animal cases, vicious animal, dog at large. Those cases are particularly difficult to deal with, as you may imagine. They are emotional and in some cases require the determination of whether an animal must be destroyed or not. We also see a fair number of general offenses, things that would be criminal in other jurisdictions where jail is a possible penalty, such as harassment, disorderly conduct, things of that nature. We definitely see an ebb and flow as to what is charged, and it sort of corresponds with what's happening to the community and to the broader community at large. I think I think the past 15 months has caused people some amount of stress, and that's reflected in some of the charges we've seen in municipal court. At every step in the process, the rights of the defendant and the community's safety are both paramount to the court. At each stage, I try to make certain that defendants understand what and are treated with respect and are subject to evidence-based sentencing, which I just reviewed for you all a moment ago. I have had a number of defendants tell me that they wish the outcome would have been different, but they felt like it was fair and that they were heard. And I can think of no better compliment to our court, both to our court staff, the prosecutor, and the court itself. We have seen some defendants that have had to appear multiple times in municipal court, and I've been pleased to see that a number of those defendants seem to have made changes. And I think that tells me that we're having some success. We're not always successful, but we sure strive to be. By having a community court, the municipality is given the opportunity to be the gatekeeper redirecting criminal behavior before it worsens. In other words, I think a lot of the cases we see in municipal court are an opportunity to keep people from going onto a more serious offense, which could result in much more dire consequences to them. Just for your information, we were able to continue court operations during the pandemic by shifting to an electronic platform. We chose to use Zoom because that's what was familiar to us at the time. And we've sort of put that in our quiver for the future in cases where people are out of state or unable to come to court. So taking something good out of the pandemic is yet another way to conduct court operations for those folks that simply can't make it to court for whatever reason. As far as who's in court, besides myself and the prosecutor, the police department has an administrator that's there. And my paralegal actually acts as a court clerk. That is to maintain some separation between the court and the police department. All of the things I've just reviewed for you sort of have evolved since I've been your judge and have evolved to reflect the particular nature of Netherlands and what's, what I feel is important and the defendants that we see in court. We've certainly seen our dockets ebb and flow with the past 15 months, and that, that's both due to, I think, what we've endured in the past 15 months in terms of some unrest in society and the pandemic. We've also seen a fair number of folks choosing not to appear in court and just pay their tickets. So just because people aren't appearing in court doesn't mean that there are not enforcement actions happening. They certainly have been, but there is an opportunity to, for defendants to avoid coming to court by paying early. That is Municipal Court 101 in record time. I promised you I wouldn't take up too much of your time, and I hope I haven't. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I usually try to see you, as I said before, sort of on an annual basis, and I think I'll see you again at reappointment in August of next year, but I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Judge. That was definitely informative and good information for all of us to know. Any trustees have questions for the judge?
Yes, sir.
All right. Take it away, Jonathan.
All right. So 70% of communication is body language. So I just was a little bit curious. It seems like you sometimes struggle with being able to do your due diligence and what you believe in as a judge under your oath with the idea that we will not criminalize penalties, Ned. Did I catch that the right way?
With respect, I work in another jurisdiction that is decriminalized, and that's fine. That's part of the community court. It's your choice as the governing body of Netherlands as to whether or not you want to have criminal penalties.
So, so hey, hey, buddy, I came across a little strong. So let me say, I really respect you.
And I didn't take it as being strong. I just wanted to answer your question. What else, what else can I tell you about? And my, I apologize for my posture. I am in an extraordinarily hot office wearing a sport coat. And I'm trying to read a set of notes to my right. So I, I think-
You're good, dude. You're, you're good. So let me just, let me phrase this in a different way is a, what are the struggles you deal with in balancing the ideals of the town of Ned with the constitution and your oath and your beliefs?
Well, my beliefs are in fairness and injustice, and I don't necessarily think that the struggle is particular to Netherlands. I think all jurisdictions sort of, they have their own uniqueness for sure, but at its core, my struggle is always to make sure the defendants are treated with respect under due process of the law, that they're afforded by the constitution. And at the end of the day, that they're heard. And the struggles are always when people don't understand or that you have to take the time to make sure they understand. And I think we do a pretty good job of allowing them the time to understand what's happening around them. I think that for a lot of people, when they come to municipal court, it's the only time they'll ever come to any court. So it's a scary experience, and I think one of the struggle, struggles, and I think we do a pretty good job of this, is to assure them that at the end of this process, they're going to be okay. I think we're good about that, and I think it's true. Does that answer your question, trustee?
It does, and God bless you, brother. I think everything that you took the time to explain and in the detail that you took it to explain was because you truly care for your oath and because you want to see people defended and respected for who they are. My last question is, you mentioned that you want to keep a little bit of distance from the, the Netherlands Police Department, but what is that relationship and how much do you reach out to the local sheriff and the responsible police officer during the time when you are making decisions?
So that's an interesting question because one of the things that I am charged to do as part of my oath is come to each case as a blank sheet of paper, right? Without having formed any opinions about anything. So my interaction with the Netherlands Police Department, certainly as, as it, as it relates to processes, they're part of the process. They're there in court with me. But I don't read their notes. I don't look at the, anything that, that is a police report or anything like that until a defendant has either entered a plea or we go to trial, and that's made evidence. So there is a separation between me and the sort of reporting side of the police department. I don't reach out to the police department for anything specific on any particular case, unless it's something like a warrant for failure to appear, which is pretty rare, actually, that, that I would reach out to an officer on a specific warrant. But generally, I see the police administrator once a month at court. He acts as the court clerk in some respects, and when he has questions, he calls me and I answer them, and I answer them as to process, not as to any particular case. I am a big believer in the separation between the court and the police department. Not only because of the optics of that, but because I think it, it's part of the foundation of our democracy, if you will, that the court is an independent arbiter and not just a, not just a part of another agency. So I take that super seriously. Any of my other jurisdictions you talked to would tell me, tell you that I take it so seriously that it sometimes, it creates inefficiencies, and I don't have any issue with that. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. And I'm so glad that I have the opportunity to ask you these questions and to hear your response because it's huge to me as well that you take your oath of office so seriously and your commitment to the constitution and to the rule of law this seriously. So there's nothing I'm asking you that is questioning what you have done for this town and how you take your oath of office and how you deal with things. It's simply to put it on public record because it was not necessarily specifically called out in the great job you did at overlining how our court system works. So I'd just like to thank you, and I appreciate how seriously you take your job and your oath of office.
I appreciate that, trustee. I take it seriously enough that while I still maintain a very small law practice, being a judge is what I've chosen to do. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Jonathan, and thank you, Judge, for those, the answers. Other trustees have any questions? Eric?
I was just thinking about the lifting of eviction moratoriums and whether or not there are any, any situations where you're ever asked to judge on landlord tenant disputes or anything of the sort, and whether or not we expect that to rise in the near future.
I just mentioned that I, did I still practice a law a little bit, and I just ran into this question yesterday, as a matter of fact. The municipal court does not have jurisdiction over any civil matters, which includes FED, which is forcible entry and detainee or an eviction, in other words. Whether or not that moratorium will be lifted, either at the federal level or in effect at the state level, I have no crystal ball.
Thank you.
Trustee Danforth, any questions?
No questions.
Trustee Corvallin?
I didn't have any. I appreciate you coming here and speaking to us, but I was a little confused with something Jonathan Baumhofer said, and I guess maybe I'm ignorant. I didn't realize that in Netherlands, there are no criminal offenses. So you could hit somebody and that's not a crime, or you could-
I'll let, I'll let the judge fill you in on that. It's, it's more the matter of our-
Judge.
So my understanding is we have simply limited the municipal fine for criminal offenses. Of course, we have criminal offenses as any law enforcement agency has. But as the town of Netherlands, we have recognized that there are certain things that individuals might do because of mental health crises, bad circumstances in their life, whatnot, that we are a little bit more lax, that as a community, we have chosen to train peace officers instead of police officers. And that as a law enforcement agency, it is both our court and our police officers and the police department's job to help one another, to build community, to look past the issues that we might bring up with one another and to try to give whatever support we can to that individual at the time. And I think what our judge has spoken to is that he feels more strongly his job is to try to see what benefit the criminal justice system can do because you see as a criminal justice system, the only reason we bring penalties is because we recognize that the behavior is incorrect with a moral law-abiding society. So we try to give options and punishment to individuals who might break that.
Talking to the judge, I wanted to hear what he had to say.
Then I would love you to, because Tanya, we mostly agree.
No, I'm not asked, I'm not even talking to you, Jonathan. I was just asking the judge a question. And I guess I didn't realize that this was the case for Ned. How long has it been this way?
I believe it was changed in 2019, trustee. I'm not positive about that. It's not unusual, it's not unusual for a jurisdiction to decriminalize its municipal code. And I guess I was inartful in the way I explained it. So when we talk about criminal offenses, the term of art, criminal offenses mean it carries with it the possibility of jail. Certainly in Netherlands, you have offenses that in other jurisdictions would be jailable offenses and would be considered criminal. However, the code says that they have been decriminalized in the sense that jail is not a possible penalty. I'll be honest with you all, in the six jurisdictions I serve, jail is uber rare. I mean, it's, it's, it's not even an annual event amongst my six jurisdictions. There's a lot of different reasons for that, but part of the reason is the the lion's share of defendants we see in municipal courts are not repeat offenders. This is maybe the first time they've ever gotten in trouble or been charged into any court. So as such, I think most judges would say jail would not necessarily be the place you start with, obviously. So in a sense, what I meant was by not having jail as a possible penalty, Netherlands has decriminalized its code.
Are there fines still allowed?
You bet. So as I said before, my options then are fines. But I can also impose community service and I can also impose education. And it's often a mix of all of those things. The prosecutor typically will make a recommendation as to fine, which I can either accept or reject. But I would say, you know, most of the penalties in Netherlands that would be would be jailable offenses in other jurisdictions would be something like a fine with a portion of it suspended pending 15 hours of community service and/or a Making a Better Choices class or some sort of educational component to that. We usually have reviews on those cases. So the defendant will come back and we'll chat about how things are going. And I can think of one case in particular where the defendant wasn't always in compliance with what he was supposed to do, but he came back each and every time and took responsibility. And I count that personally in my sort of view of sentencing as, as success. That's all.
That's interesting. And so if someone just doesn't pay the fine or show for community service, there's just not much you can do past that.
Sure, I can, I can issue a warrant for their arrest and have them brought before the court on something called a show cause to explain why they have not complied with the terms of the court's sentence. In some cases, if someone has not state law does not allow courts to place people in jail for failure to pay fines. That's not a Netherlands thing. That's a Colorado thing. So if it's merely a failure to pay fines, that cannot be jailable at state law, except in very narrow circumstances anyway. So we have actually in Netherlands, a pretty good success rate of getting people to return to court when they need to return to court and have a conversation about about consequences and in many cases, progress.
Nice. Well, thanks so much for taking your time to come and talk to us.
My pleasure.
One last comment, Mr. Mayor. Very much appreciate you, Mr. Judge, for coming forward before the BOT. And I'd just like to ask the rest of the BOT to take a moment to recognize that as the town of Netherlands, we do have individuals in our court who are very knowledgeable and really respect what we have set forward as a town to enforce. And that these individuals are willing to fight for us. So we need to be willing to fight for this town.
Agreed. Thank you so much, not only for coming before us this evening, Judge, but you know, for your years of service to the town of Netherlands.
The pleasure is all mine, Mr. Mayor and members of the Board of Trustees. I hope you have a great meeting and a great week. Take care.
Thank you. Have a good evening as well. All right. Thank you for the discussion and the good questions from the board. We will move on to our second informational item this evening, which I believe we have our sustainability coordinator Garrett online to introduce for us.
Yep, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great. Good evening, Board of Trustees. I'm here to introduce Millie Marsh and Sunshare. Millie has a presentation about how residents can sign up for a community solar garden. Trustee App brought this opportunity to our last SAB meeting on July 22nd. And the SAB passed a motion to put this in front of the Board of Trustees. Sunshare is a private company, so there are limitations to what the town can actually do to inform residents of this opportunity. And so because of these constraints, I've contacted Wild Bear and they've agreed to promote the Sunshare opportunity. In return, Sunshare will donate $50 to Wild Bear for every subscription. And so this essentially is a win-win for everyone. Sunshare, Wild Bear, the town and residences, residents of Netherlands. Sunshare obviously benefits from getting subscribers. Wild Bear is receiving donations and helping the planet by promoting renewable energy. And this helps the town towards their 100% renewable energy goal. And it helps residents because they are able to take advantage of cost competitive renewable energy, especially for those that rent and are not able to purchase rooftop solar. So with all that said, let's hear from Millie Marsh.
Thank you for the introduction, Garrett. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
You can hear me? Okay, okay, good. It's weird because I don't get to see anybody's face. So hello, everybody. I'm the national sales manager from, from Sunshare, just like Garrett mentioned with Community Solar. And I'm just going to take like seven to 10 minutes of your time really quick because I know you have a lot of important things, obviously with Judge Thor before me. There's, there's huge concern. So yes, so thank you for the time and I appreciate it, everybody, the trustees and Mayor Larson, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen really quick. And please let me know if, can you let me know if you can see it, Garrett?
Looks good.
Okay, good. Okay, so I've been speaking to Alan and Garrett and Miranda about a possible partnership program between Netherlands and Sunshare and things that we can do to help, you know, the town of Netherlands and local, you know, sustainable small businesses as along, you know, with Wild Bear. I feel like we're in the same market. We have the same vision. And so I think this might be, this might do well in the town of Netherlands. Okay, so really quick, Sunshare, we've developed 100 megawatts of projects so far. We have two gardens coming live this year and two more in 2022. So we need 2,500 resident subscribers to fill those and really have a voice that it is important to the state of Colorado that, that we, you know, we are making the movement to go green and to choose, you know, solar as opposed to the fossil fuels. Right now we have 5,000 subscribers billed monthly in the state of Colorado and we have another 8,000 in Minnesota. So we're hoping to grow that, we're hoping to double that in, in the next year or two. We, 2021, we hit our 10th anniversary. Mark, the nation's first community solar legislation passed in 2010. And then David Olsheski, our CEO, actually founded Sunshare in 2011. So we've been going strong, you know, for 10 years and hope to really make a household name and get the word out about, you know, how easy it is to subscribe to community solar as opposed to maybe people having solar panels on their roof. And with that, people having solar panels on their roof, you know, 22, only 22% actually qualify in the state of Colorado for rooftop solar. The other 78% are just left choosing fossil fuels. So if you, if you rent, you have a condo with an HOA. My house has a lot of shade. I didn't get approved for solar. Then I felt like I was just kind of stuck burning these fossil fuels, but now everybody can make, you know, they can, they can have a choice with community solar. And it's funny because when I speak to people who are renters, who they're like, you know, Millie, I only have a 650 square foot apartment. What impact am I going to make? But you know, I like to tell everybody equally, we're all making a huge impact and even that 650 square foot apartment is going to take an average of 10,000 to 12,000 miles of, you know, off, off the road of like car fuels and dirty fuels. So we're, we're, we're making a big difference together. And we're having a voice as we all subscribe into these gardens and we keep moving forward with the green energy. Sunshare is really about, about the community and one of our core values, well, two of them are, you know, we're friendly and environmental. So you know, with that, our subscribers, when they need to speak to us, we're a local small owned business. We're privately held, like Garrett said. But if our subscribers, you know, need to reach us, they know us by first name. We like to give back to local small businesses, especially, you know, post pandemic. And I, Miranda was so nice to send me a list of local restaurants and and places in Netherlands that we would love to put on our gift card list, which I'll talk to you about in one second. And landowners, this is important as well. I believe our garden that we're building right now is going to go live at the end of October in the fall. And we are actually leasing it from a farmer who no longer has nutrient dense land in Weld County. And he wasn't able to make crops and, you know, have money for his family. So we are renting, they're releasing that land for 20 years and his wife was so excited and she ended up passing away abruptly, like unexpectedly. So we've named this next garden coming up after her. It's called the Paula Carr Garden. And we'll be leasing that land for the next 20 years. So it's really important to us that you know, we give back and we help the local community and also the planet. So underneath our panels where we're building these gardens, excuse me, we like to build apiaries, pollinators. We like to leave the land better than we, than we got it essentially. And for those of you who kind of don't know what Community Solar is, is, you know, we build these, these acres of solar panels that we harness the solar energy from the sun. We put it onto Excel's grid and then the residents receive the energy just like they did with the fossil fuels, but it's clean energy. They're choosing to offset their electric usage from 100%, you know, of their usage to green, clean energy. The ease of Sunshare is nice, just like I talked about before, is that, you know, it reaches to everybody. But it's nice that there, you know, there's no upfront fee. With solar panels, you kind of have to have an upfront, upfront cost, usually, you know, from 10,000 to I would say 20,000, depending on, you know, what your roof can handle. Time, there's no time constraint. I mean, October is when, you know, people subscribe, that's when they're going to start accruing that, that green, clean energy. And, you know, savings, it will decrease over time. There is a small premium that happens year three. And we could talk about that more, but it's usually about three to $5 a month for, for a larger house is what they would pay in year three. And we can talk about that. I just don't want to take up too much time right now. So we've done something recently last year with the town of Breckenridge and I, you know, this is kind of why Alan and I have been speaking in the first place is that we had a very successful partnership with Brek. We were in their solarized program. And what they did was they sent an email to, there was a website for sustainablebrek.com and they sent an email out to residents there and anybody who's interested would go to said website and, you know, say, hey, I'm interested. And, you know, we gave back to, we gave back to HC3 to support, you know, climate action there. And just like Garrett mentioned earlier, we had a meeting with Wild Bear where we would love to do the same and contribute $50 to each resident that subscribes in their name to Wild Bear. So, you know, we kind of bounced back and forth ideas of what we could do. But I think what I would like to do is, you know, give this or maybe send this message via, I know you guys, you do PO boxes in your town. We can't really, I guess we could send, we could send mailers to the PO boxes, but kind of get the word out about Sunshare and how easy it is to subscribe and choose green energy. And it's for anybody who has an Excel bill, anybody who uses Excel as they're electric. And then offer subscribers a $100 gift card to local businesses in Netherlands to help them post pandemic. And then plus a $50 donation for each resident that signs. And we would, you know, we would do all of the marketing materials. I do have some emails to my PR person and my marketing person to some internal marketing people at, at Wild Bear as well. And hoping for like the Mountaineer newspaper to talk to people there. But we would take care of, of, of all marketing and and things like that because I know that you guys can't really promote a private business. I understand that. So it's really easy to sign up. You know, you could just go to mysunshare.com or talk to me or one of my salespeople. And then we would have a website, you know, for Netherlands that they could go to too, with a specific promo code, where they would get that $100 gift card to a local business of their choice. And then here's just some of the pictures of solar gardens for people who haven't seen them, but I assume we've all driven past some of them at one point in our lives. So so yeah, that's it. I tried to make it as fast as I could, guys.
Thank you, Millie. Thank you for the presentation. Trustees, any questions regarding the, the Sunshare Community Solar Garden? Trustee Corvallin?
No, I don't have any questions. I, I mean, is there a link to promote this with like? How? How to get more information?
Yeah, that's a great question. So what we would do is we'd make a landing page specifically for the town of Netherlands. And then, you know, I, I would really like to, I'd really like to get my, my PR and my marketing people connected with Wild Bear and maybe someone with the town of Netherlands. But yes, we would make a landing page specifically for Netherlands with all the information.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
It's Tanya, trustee Danforth?
Yeah, thank you for the, the presentation. I think this is great. You know, we're constantly looking for different opportunities out there for switching to renewable energy. I guess one question I had is, is there a limit on the gift cards and, and the promotional stuff? Like if we have a lot of people sign up, is that there a limit to how many of those can do that and get those, those special gifts?
No, no limit whatsoever. So that's a good question, Lindsay. We have, I have 250 subscribers left for this upcoming garden and then I need to fill the next garden in December with 300 subscribers, residential subscribers. So no, there's really, there's really not a limit whatsoever. No.
Okay.
Thanks, Lindsay. Trustee Koomzesmael?
I was just wondering, I guess more on the, on the company level, like what, how exactly the relationship with Excel Energy works and with think also enter I think also NRG is also a partner with Sunshare. And I was just wondering how those relationships actually function or use subsidiary company? Or your independent company that contracts with them? How does that, how does that work?
We're exactly, it's my, we're exactly the second. So we're a subsidiary that, that contracts with them. So we can't say that it's a, it's a partnership, but we do work really well together. I mean, they, their garden, they, Excel does have a couple of solar gardens, but they're full. And so they're always sending people to us, but we can't really say it's a partnership, but we do, you know, harness all the energy and put it onto their grid. And they disperse it, you know, for us. So it's a subsidiary. Yeah.
Thank you.
Eric, Mayor Protem Baumhover?
So thank you for your time and explaining all this. I failed to catch something through all their presentation, which is what is this town's bottom line?
Uh, there's not, there's not a bottom line, Mr. Baumhover. It's just that there's no bottom line. We just want to get the word out. What we want to do, you know, our, our goal at Sunshare is just to make a household name of Sunshare and get the buzz going that you do have a choice. You can choose clean energy as opposed to these fossil fuels that we've, you know, been opposed to our whole life. So there's, there's no bottom line for Netherlands. It's just a partnership.
So as a partnership, this is a discussion item. It's not an action item. So, oh.
This is purely information.
Yeah, yeah.
Also, so should, should we choose to enter into this agreement? What does it cost our budget?
No, I think actually this is a, a partnership. Sunshare is going to work through Wild Bear to advertise the services. This is simply an opportunity to get word out to the town. There is no partnership between the town and Sunshare. This is just an opportunity to let the residents of Netherlands know that there is a renewable option out there that is going to be advertised through a collaboration with Wild Bear.
Thank you for clarifying and thank you, Jill.
All right. When, when leads to my question is sort of what is the timeline? When are you guys thinking of launching this and getting the sort of the landing page and an opportunity for residents?
So I'd like to, you know, I know that the, the marketing director for Wild Bear doesn't come back until the end of October. I mean, October, the end of August. Sorry. And then, you know, I've done some introductory emails for everybody right now, but I, I would think that we could have the website going and maybe some fun stuff shooting. I, I would say the first or second week of September, don't you think, Garrett?
Yeah, I think that's the goal.
Yeah. Yeah.
Wonderful. Yeah. Look forward to, to seeing that coming out and hopefully, you know, getting out via the various media methods here in town, the newspaper, through social media.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Larson. I appreciate your time. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Thanks for speaking with us tonight, Millie, and have a wonderful evening.
You too. Goodbye, everyone.
All right. We will move forward into our action items for this evening, which we have three. First two are both DDA related, and I see our DDA Executive Director on here. So I am just going to hand this off to Kate to introduce one of our annual traditions here with the DDA and the town and the fire department.
Good evening, Mayor Larson and members of the Board of Trustees. I'm happy to be here tonight with the Fire Marshal Rick Hendrickson to present Resolution 202113 for the continued funding of the IGA between the NDDA and Netherlands Fire Protection District. You'll find in your packet, the proposed resolution, the IGA and information on how the funding amount was determined. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Trying to remember, this might be a question better for, for Rick, actually. We, we've been doing this for pretty much since the DDA was founded, haven't we? This is, I mean, I, I can think of this over the last almost decade at least. Is that right, Rick?
I'm only aware of it for the last couple of years. I don't know what occurred before that. So sorry, I don't have that information.
No, no, it's just, it seems like I recall like about every August, we have this, this item on our agendas to, to fund the fire marshal position or to the, yeah, to, to fund the position over at the fire department. So any questions from trustees for the fire marshal or the executive director of the DDA? Eric?
If both, both of these organizations are in favor of doing this, I don't see any reason to, to really dig any further into it. I think it makes sense to do and I have no questions.
Jonathan, our DDA representative or liaison? Jonathan is still muted. We'll come back to Jonathan here in a second. Lindsay, any questions? Comments?
No questions at this time.
Okay. Tanya?
No, um, sounds great. Thank you.
Okay. Jonathan, you still there? Did we lose you? Oh, now we do seem to have lost him off the participant list. So we will come back. Hopefully he will rejoin us momentarily. In the meantime, this is an action item this evening. So I'm going to open the floor up to any public comment. If anyone would like, from the public would like to speak on this item for up to three minutes, now be your chance, simply catch our attention, identify yourself and whether or not you are a town resident and you can have the floor for up to three minutes. Not seeing any. So I will bring this back to the board. Despite having lost, lost Jonathan from his connection here, we do still have a quorum for this evening. So I believe that means we can move forward with any further comments or possible motions from remaining trustees.
I'd move to approve Resolution 2021-13 and the continued funding of the IGA between the NDDA and the NFPD.
Do we have a second?
I second it. This is Tanya.
Tanya with the second. All right. Miranda, if you would please call the vote?
Trustee Danforth?
Yeah.
Trusty Kooms Ismail?
Yes.
Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Trusty Corvillan?
Yes.
And I will note for the director that Mayor Protem Baumhover is no longer in the meeting at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. The motion passes. Thank you, Kate. And well, I will throw the floor right back to you, Kate, for the next item, which is the NDDA Investment Policy.
Yes. Thank you. And thank you all for supporting the resolution. All right. Our second item before you tonight is to bring the proposed changes that were requested at a Board of Trustees meeting earlier this year. The proposed language around investments as well as a process for investments has been recommended unanimously to the Board of Trustees and is included in your packet for your consideration and support this evening.
Yeah. And I really want to thank you for, for putting it in here and sort of the highlighted sections that speak directly to the comments and questions regarding, from the Board of Trustees, particularly regarding the nature of investments and sort of the procedure for how those would happen in the next round.
Yes.
So thank you very much for that. One quick question I do want to have, because I know it's called down here that the NDDA, that the $250,000 that's invested at Sunflower is, remains the only current investment by the DDA, right?
Yes, you were. That was just what I was going to say. So that is the only investment. And I know that that was a specific question. So we wanted to make sure that we answered that for you.
All right. Thank you very much. A question, comment from other trustees? We'll begin with trustee Danforth? Keep mixing up the order here?
Yeah. So I, I guess I, I just need a little more clarification on the, the certificate of deposit you guys made at Sunflower Bank. I mean, I've, I've heard a few details about it, but I, I don't think I understand how, how this happened before we agreed to allow for investments. And I also want to know, what's the return that we're getting on that?
I, I do not know the specifics on the timing of the investment versus the policy. So I welcome if, if Miranda or anybody else, or if Ron Mitchell's on the phone, Ron was supposed to be on with us, but he's out of town. So I'm not sure if he's on right now. He could speak to that better than me. And the return, I don't think I have an act, a percentage, but it's not, it's, it's slight.
Okay. I mean, I.
Than just sitting in account was the, the thought. So that the money is actually, yeah, I don't have the, the, what the interest that we're earning is in notes, but I can get that back to you.
Okay. I think my, my concern here was that an investment, money was moved and, and an investment was made before our agreement has actually been voted on. You know, as we're just now doing that. So the fact that this happened outside of us being able to review it, which is, you know, now going to be a part of the policy as, you know, since we didn't have a policy before. And I'm not, I'm not quite sure how this happened. I just want to make sure this never can happen again. That anything's done outside of the, the purview of, of people involved of the NDDA, of the BOT. You know, I feel like this was, was done and none of us knew anything about it. I don't know anything about Sunflower Bank. I don't know anything about the certificate of deposits. And so obviously I'm not a fan of this happening with taxpayer money. I think, I think it's a, it's a mistake that this happened. And yeah, I, I, I don't know exactly what I want from NDDA on this, but I, I just think that it's, it's not a good situation. And moving forward, I, yeah, I don't, I don't want to see anything happen without it, the proper policy being followed. But moving forward, I do like the policy. I think that, you know, the language that we talked about is in there. And I think that moving forward, that this is, this is going to be a good thing to abide by.
The trustee Danforth, it's Miranda. I actually don't have too much more information, but what I would say is that what we can follow up with Ron, who unfortunately could not be here tonight, who was obviously the main player in that and get more information and then email it to the BOT to kind of close that loop for you, since we don't have all the information tonight.
Okay. Yeah. I definitely want as much information as possible on this. And I think it's something that, you know, this is of taxpayer money that I, I don't know if there's something we should disclose about this, you know, on a public forum, that this should be noted that this happened. Because I'm not sure where, if the public even knows that this happened.
Would you, would you, I mean, another, what we could do is bring it back as an informational item at the next meeting. So that way there is that, that public information piece of letting everyone know exactly how this unfolded. Maybe that's the desire of the board. Okay.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Yeah.
Yeah. And then we can actually, we can use it also as an education piece so that people can understand, you know, how this money comes and how it's property tax revenue and, and, and understand a little bit of that piece. I think that that could be helpful for everyone. And absolutely the goal is to follow this policy moving forward so that we all have trusted each other as well.
Absolutely. Yeah. I, I think that's a great move. You know, that we can be on the up and up with everything and make sure that all information is available to everyone involved. So I, I think that's awesome. So thanks, Miranda, for that suggestion.
Thank you, Lindsay. Tanya, any questions or comments regarding the policy?
I don't. I mean, as always, I wish that the money could just be spent on projects quicker. So that there isn't such a surplus of money that it feels like it needs to be invested. How much money is just sitting in a bank account besides this 250,000?
Um, about a little over 700,000 additional. Several of these, most of this money is generally, there are some ongoing projects that the DDA has started to commit to, like the Big Springs Project, where the full amount of that is not known at this time. And so I know that that was part of the motivation for moving some of the money is that we know we're going to invest in some of this and we want it to keep working for the community instead of just sitting like that while we're waiting to get everything together. So I guess that's kind of part of it.
What's the Big Springs Project that you're talking about?
I mean, it just, how we're talking about doing Big Springs Parking, that, that project. Yeah, sorry. So, so that's really.
It takes, that's like a fraction of that money though. So yeah, I would love to figure out a way.
Yeah, there's, and there's, there's a few other things and, you know, and that's.
Like us, but it seems like, wow, we could really use this money on these things in town now, not. But as opposed to changing the language to what we had said, that's fine. That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tanya? Eric?
Could I agree with trustee Danforth more on, on that CZ that was made? That was, it was an extremely unclear presentation that was given about that. I think the last time and it, it made it very unclear as to what had actually happened. So it's, it would be really nice to get some clarification on that moving forward. And that does, while, I mean, I also completely agree with trustee Corvillan and what she just said, like we need to spend this money on the projects that we need to do. I think I still believe that this whole investment policy thing is a cart before the horse type of measure that is just delaying doing the work that needs to be done. And we need to get that work done like yesterday. And then the money just needs to be spent on these projects. I mean, the town is feeling a bit like it's crumbling right now in terms of especially the roads infrastructurally. So that Big Springs Parking project, we just need to get that, we need to get that kind of stuff moving. But the other concern that I have here is I, while I, I appreciate the idea that these investments will be presented to the, to the BOT for a vote, it says nothing in here about the nature of what will be presented. And, and really it's just because of my kind of historical experiences with presentations that come out of the DDA, which I think have been at varying levels of completeness. And I, I would really like to see something that, that says that the DDA will commit to doing the research that needs to be done in order to present something coherent to the Board of Trustees, to give us something that we can actually vote on with kind of full knowledge of what it is that we're actually voting on, rather than just saying like in one line on a sheet of paper, we want to make a certificate of deposit at Sunflower Bank, right? I mean, that's not a presentation. And that's the kind of thing that I'm sort of expecting. And so it strikes me that it might be beneficial to say something about that in this policy that sort of demands a certain level of due diligence by the DDA before bringing this to the BOT.
Okay, we can absolutely add a line in, in the process that states that.
I just think that that would be a helpful reminder for how, for how these sorts of interactions should, should go in the future.
No, understood.
So how about, you know, this is an action item. So we'll go to public comment. Eric, can you take a look at that procedure for investment section in there? And as we come back, have a amendment available, ready?
I will try to do that. Yes.
Nothing, nothing like a little pressure, you know? Hopefully a lot of people want to speak on this, right? All right. So as I said, we will go to public comment on this. So if anyone from the public would like to speak on the NDDA Investment Policy and give Eric a few minutes here to draft some words, now would be your chance. Catch our attention in some way. I am not seeing any. We'll come back to the board. Miranda, can you scroll down to page 670 in the packet? There we go. So we can all see here what we're working with. Can we say something about the treasure? We'll bring the opportunity to the full Netherlands Board of Trustees, or sorry, that's investment we forwarded to the Netherlands Board of Trustees along with relevant research and complete presentation or something like that, Eric?
Just, I'm just looking here. There's a section called overall objectives and scope. There's a section called overall objectives and scope. Of it's something like the D D A will perform due diligence in researching and making a formal presentation to the B O T that clearly demonstrates the financial benefits of the investment as well as consistency with the overall objectives and scope of this policy. Maybe something like that.
I, that sounds pretty good to me. Yeah, putting it there on uh page sixty four, right in that first first uh block of text.
Yeah.
Do you wanna, you wanna say that again? Um.
Yes, please.
We can catch it for the for Kate and.
Yeah, I've got some of it, but could you say that?
I wish, I wish I could put it in a in a chat or something here, but I'll I'll read it slowly.
I can reactivate the chat.
Oh, sorry, Miranda, what was that?
I was gonna say, I can reactivate the chat so you can put it in there instead of. There you go. It's, the chat should be available. Do you see it?
I see it.
Yep.
There it is. Thank you.
So so you you'd like to make an amendment to this. Uh, it sounds like it's been accepted by the D D A Executive Director.
Yes.
So uh, any other further comments from the Board of Trustees, either regarding the entire investment or uh Eric's modified language within uh the overall objective and scope?
I like the modification that that Eric proposes.
We like to have a motion regarding acceptance of the uh modified N D N D D A investment policy.
I will make that motion, sorry.
Yeah, I think you can make the motion, Eric.
Well, then I'll make it.
Motion to approve.
Indeed.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second, but do we, do we need to say the entire thing when we make a motion?
I would recommend at least doing up there, approving the investment policy as amended based on the language trustee Koomis isma provided.
Eric, go for it.
Okay, so, sorry. Um, what, is this a resolution? Is this a, what what is this that?
There is no resolution. You'd just be making a motion to pa- pass the, to approve that investment policy.
So I I motioned to approve the revised investment policy statement of the Netherlands Downtown Development Authority with the amended language that the D D A will perform due diligence and researching and making a formal presentation to the B O T that clearly demonstrates the financial benefits of the investment as well as consistency with the overall objects and scope of this policy.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Miranda.
Trustee Koomis isma.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes. Policy is passed. Kate, thank you.
Thank you all.
And yeah, thank you, guys. Thank you, Eric, for uh the rapid writing and editing there. Uh, we will move on to our final eject, our final action item this evening, which is a uh rant grant uh opportunity from Dola for the grit removal, and I believe Chris Pelletier is online to introduce this to us. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor, and uh just to to speak to the last item uh briefly, um, the D D A is committing nearly um the the Big Springs parking parking project is worth uh possibly over two hundred thousand dollars. They've also committed a hundred and forty thousand dollars to tip, and then the S M S project is worth eighty thousand dollars. And so those three figures there alone are over half of what, you know, um, they have in the bank. So I just wanted to put that out there. Or Kate. So. All right, so um current removal. So um, yeah, thanks for hearing me tonight on grit removal, and I've talked about this with you guys over the past couple of years, and actually, I think for some of you, um, I brought it up at your first meeting. Um, and I brought it up with uh B O T and previous meetings and an important project um for um adding equipment to the wastewater treatment facility. He um I uh, the last time we talked about was back in September twenty twenty, and the um, at that time, we had decided creatively to move funds from uh the capital improvement um budget to support um completing permitting with C D P H E and then having a full design for um for constructing the 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 addition to the facility. And so excuse me, and so um, and with that in mind, we thought that uh we'd have a very attractive application. We were just completely shovel ready. So we've achieved that nearly a year later. We're there, we have our permitting, and we have full design, so we're we're ready to go. So um, staff is requesting that the B O T consider um, the two avenues I've mentioned, your and your aim, that rely on American Recovery Act funds. And um, and I'll just call them ARP from from here on out, you know, item books, and we all know what they are. And uh, so um, I know that at previous discussions about these funds with the B O T that you've sort of thrown uh cold water on using these funds for infrastructure projects. But I'm hoping tonight that I can make a really compelling argument of why these funds actually are are really impactful. They're they're really impactful to every ratepayer, every visitor, every business owner here in town. Um, and then these, this project uh fits squarely within the criteria of these funds. So hopefully by the end of this project here, like, great presentation, and you, you've really turned me. So, well, let's see what problems I'm gonna get. So um, our funds have been granted to communities that have been adversely affected to um by the the pandemic, COVID nineteen. And primarily, you know, meet that criteria of having a reduction in revenue as a result of the um pandemic. But however, I think Netherlands, well, it doesn't meet that criteria, and actually, Netherlands um, and and Miranda can correct me if if this is inaccurate, but I think Netherlands revenue actually increased. And so um, certainly, there are probably other communities that are in worse shape in Netherlands, so we're very fortunate. Uh, we actually don't meet that criteria. So um so I have an argument for um utilities, because utilities actually has um seen a reduction. So um, for example, there currently is a moratorium on late fees. And while I understand that this is not a popular revenue stream, um, but nonetheless, it is a revenue stream, and uh, and it helps to incentivize people to pay their bills. And then the um, the other moratorium that we have are on shut offs. And again, not a popular revenue stream, and I I don't like chugging people off. Um, but uh, again, nonetheless, it is a a reduction revenue, and it does serve to incentivize people to pay their bills to stop the bleeding, so to speak, and um, and currently, there is no consequence for no paying. And then, thirdly, uh, reduction in base fees. Um, and in the near future here, we're going to bring back a a presentation to to correct code or to amend code to um ensure that base fees, there's only one base fee for every single family home. Um, regardless of of opinion tier. Um, and there's a reduction in in revenue. And so, um, you know, those three things alone do represent um, at least a small reduction in revenue. So I just wanted to point that out. Um. We went through recently a master infrastructure plan, and we identified the future needs of the utility system over the next decade, and um Netherlands is clearly growing um, and not really slowing down. We all see it. Netherlands can be crazy sometimes, and um then it placed a value on these future. And then through the um, the rate study, we attempted to quantify those needs and was recommended a rate that should adequately uh address those needs over the next ten years. And I wanted to point out, though, um, you know, in determining rates and affordability that the B O T, you know, was considering the impact of of every penny, you know, every fifty cents, every dollar to um your residents and to um the ratepayers here in Netherlands, how impactful that is. And um, and I, and what a difficult decision that was to either raise rates or to make a change to these rates because it affects everybody. And through that, you know, we heard comments like, how did we get here? Why do we have ten million dollars worth of what what's going on? Are we correcting past um deficiencies? And I I just want to point out that tonight is one of those decisions where you actually are gonna see an impact based on a decision you make tonight that will affect the rate study ten years down the road. And it's these types of decisions incrementally over time that get us to that ten million dollar mark. So um, the rate study, and then, you know, based on that, you know, one dollar increase and and all that, I want to set that aside for a second. Because I'm, I'm gonna come back to that um when I discuss um perspective on a loan. So um, the rate study identified three, or really, you know, four sources of revenue to pay for future needs. So the first source is user rates, obviously, I'll pay rates per gallon in base fees. That supports the general operating revenue, then also um small capital projects, um, getting sewer mains or fixing manholes, that kind of thing, and um policies. Then the second source is um sewer reserves. And um plant investment fees or P I Fs is really what supports those reserves. So as new development comes, we collect P I Fs, we put them inside in sewer reserves, they build up over time, then we can draw from those reserves when we do have big projects or grants or loans or so. The third source of revenue is um grant, and again, we we can draw from the reserves to to match a grant and help maximize um the limited amount of funds that Netherlands has. And then the fourth and final revenue, and maybe not final, but um is a loan. And that simply is what it is. It impacts every ratepayer and and essentially, you have to divide that loan up by every ratepayer. In your aim, I present um two scenarios, and these scenarios are based on feedback from um discussion that Jen and and Miranda had with uh our area representative from Dola. They met to discuss the town's application and and the strength of that application. So based on that, scenario one, I guess that um we asked for a thirty percent um grant from from Dola and match it with the town's seventy percent. And part of that seventy percent is eighty thousand dollars from ARP, a hundred thousand dollars from the twenty twenty two operating funds, which we're already building into the budget anyway. And then um a hundred thousand dollars from sewer reserves, which best for a total of two hundred eighty thousand. And then the thirty remaining percent would be um a hundred and twenty thousand, which is what we would ask from Dola for a total project of four hundred thousand dollars. And that's what I believe the grit removal project, and actually, I think it will cost less, but it's hard to say right now in this environment. And the rationale, you know, would be in this application is that the town um would be exercising fiscal restraint, you know, minimizing depleting their uh existing reserves, utilizing all the funds at its disposal, all the different pools of funds as much as possible, and being really um financially responsible with the residents' money, and then asking Dola to come to the table and match a little bit. That's the idea, and that's why I think, you know, that could be attractive to Dola. Now, I want to point out that um it is a competitive grant cycle. There are sixty five million dollars worth of projects. There's only six million available, and I would argue there's probably communities in greater need than that. Having said that, I do know that Dola does like spread out their funds as much as possible and and give their funds to projects they know will be spent and successful, and so Netherlands does have a chance. Um, but nothing's guaranteed. The second scenario is don't apply for Dola funds at all. And I'm actually a fan of this scenario. In this scenario, I'm asking the B O T to consider using two hundred thousand dollar funds. And the, our funds would be used for, um, we'd use two hundred from ARP, and then we'd use um sewer reserves of a hundred thousand dollars and a hundred thousand from the operating budget, and we'd complete the project. Now, I I do realize that it's not, these projects can seem like they're not tangible. Um, it's not like fifty dollars in everybody's pocket, and they they got Uncle Sam money, and they get to go buy beer or whatever it is. And so it's not as impactful as that maybe, um, but and I believe it's more impact. And um, and I, and I want to, and and you guys are an unrelenting advocate of utilities and infrastructure and spending money. Uh, it's uber important, and 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 it speaks to that piece that I I mentioned earlier, is how did we get here? How come we have ten million dollars? Want to give a perspective on the loan piece and kind of like bring that back to where it becomes tangible and and um impactful. And and just give it perspective. If, if you have, say, a two hundred thousand dollar you would take that two hundred thousand dollars and you divide it by the six hundred users that exist in Netherlands. It could be around three hundred thirty thousand or three hundred and thirty bucks. And you divide that by twelve months and be under thirty dollars a month for an entire year. And then usually, you know, a loan is twenty years, and so if you divide that up by twenty years and the twelve, it'd be actually about a buck forty per person per month for every user in Netherlands. And is that, is that small of a project, just a hundred thousand dollars? I mean, we typically get get a loan for much bigger than that. But and with just putting the perspective, when you guys are, you know, thinking about raising rates, a dollar forty cents, and you're you're waffling on that, you don't want to do that, and it is important and impactful to all your users. But when we have an opportunity to use funds that are essentially free for infrastructure projects that fit squarely in the criteria of this funding and and sort of minimize that impact of the future rate study where we're like, oh, what happened? We're behind. How did we get here? Why do we owe six million dollars worth of projects?
So so Chris, just just out of curiosity, when is the deadline for this grant?
September four.
Okay, so this meeting is.
This meeting, I need an approval for um applying for these funds this week.
And so what you're looking for from the board is either approval to um apply for this grant using A D K of the ARP funds or to not apply for this grant and uh to basically do it all from in-house funds. That's what I'm asking. That's what you're asking from the board, okay?
Mayor Larson, this is Miranda. I'd love to just offer a quick assessment from our meeting with Dola. So myself and Dan Landon, we connected with them, and their first question to me was, why aren't we using ARP funds? ARP funds, this is one of the eligible criteria. And so there is a bit of a question of why are you looking to Dola to fund it when you already have the money? So that's, that's really, it creates a bit of a challenge in that sense of they may not fund it in its entirety if we ask for the thirty percent, or even if we ask for more, because they want to see either that town maybe invest some of the A R P funds, or if we're not going to, we have a definitive plan for how to use it. And since the board does not have that yet, and we won't before September first, it just creates uh some questions in their minds about how town is using our own resources.
Right. And so just as a reminder, we were given, was it one hundred, one hundred sixty five K this year of our funds?
Yeah, it's like a hundred and eighty nine. It's just shy of two, we'll be just shy of four thousand, four hundred thousand when we're gonna get both.
Yeah, it was a hundred and ninety three thousand.
Thanks, Rita.
So a hundred and ninety three, and we. So a hundred and ninety-three, and we at our last meeting discussed a policy that was roughly forty-five K of that for the utility bills and et cetera. Um so that brings it down to a hundred and thirty-five, and this proposal would uh would give us a remainder of fifty-five thousand to do some undefined project with.
If you were to go with option two here, which which Chris had noted is preferred, yeah, we would do the remaining hundred thousand this year and then the second installment next year, leaving us ninety-eight thousand dollars or ninety-three as a part of the next year's installment.
If if we go with the, and I, my understanding is sort of the proposed or the preferred version is to go for Dola with the eighty thousand.
Well, really, the ultimate prefer, you know, the the ideal is to use entirely ARPA funds. Uh but if that's not a desire of the board, then yes, I think option number one is is the most appropriate. You know, they did say the higher match we come to the table with.
Yep. And so, well, and because if we were, if we were to apply for the Dola grant with the eighty thousand and we don't get it, then the second is still on the table, doing it all in house. So, okay, I just wanted to make sure everyone's kind of on the same page before we go to questions on board in terms of what this means for the ARP funds that we have uh both this year and next year and the commitment for those. So I'd like to throw it open to any further questions from the Board of Trustees. Um Eric, you want to start us off this time? There's only three of you, so I don't have that many choices on who to start with.
Thanks, Chris, for the for the impassioned uh kind of plea here for 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 using these funds. I mean, honestly, you've kind of had me at Dola. Um I I I really love the idea of diversifying the way that we're paying for these things and keeping as much stuff available as possible for other projects. I mean, I am thinking about other infrastructure concerns, like the community center, light roads, projects and things like that that ARP funds could possibly be used for. And I kind of, I mean, it's difficult to keep up with everything, but I kind of want to leave those options on the table as much, as long as we can before we we spend it all. So while I know it's more work for town staff to apply for a Dola grant, and I do, I am sorry for that. I uh I think it makes sense to at least go for it.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Tanya?
Uh, yeah, I agree with Eric. I mean, besides the time cost of applying for the grant and maybe they'll give it to us and then we can spend the ARP money on some other projects. And if not, we have the ARP money. So either way, we're gonna get it done.
Okay. Lindsay?
Yep, I have to agree. I think that applying for the grant first and, you know, giving that a shot um makes a lot of sense. And, you know, I think we were talking about uh different percentages of what we would want Dola to to fund versus what we would put in. Um if we say, go ahead and go for it, what what percent are we looking at at getting approval for?
A percent of the um the ARPA funds or what percent?
We're looking at, we're looking for the thirty percent match, right?
Yeah. Is that what we want to stick with? Is that what we're looking to approve? Or were we looking to say, you know, we need more money from Dolas, we'll put in less and we want them to give more? Which one is preferred at this point?
So I think at this point, based on the feedback they got and what Chris had noted and how competitive we need to come to the table probably with that seventy percent. So I think the question back to the board, though, is Chris recommended using a combination of ARP, the operating budget and sewer reserves, if I'm understanding, maybe the desire is to not use any ARP? And then you want to still like that seventy percent match from budget?
No, I think from what from what I understood and from what, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I think the board was discussing to use the eighty thousand dollars in ARP this year. Uh the the remainder from the hundred thousand dollars from the operating budget next year and then the hundred thousand from the sewer reserves to get to the seventy percent. Sort of that that proposal, it's in the first paragraph there that uh we can see on the screen.
If that is the desire of the board, I would I would strongly encourage that just because going to the table with no ARP funds, the question, I guess, the board needs to decide quickly is how are you committing those funds? Because that would be a request of the application packet is for us to share how we use the funds.
Right. If if it would be beneficial for the application to invert um the amounts from ARP and from the sewer reserves, for instance, like to say a hundred thousand from ARP and eighty thousand from sewers sewer reserves, if that looks better on the application, I think we should do that.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't know if it meant, I mean, Chris, I'd love to hear your way, but based on our conversation, I don't know if it really matters. They'd also want to see us using reserves and so they'd like to see us, they just want to see we use our own funds that we have. And so what comes from what? You can make it both even nineties. I'm not sure that really matters. Chris, do you have a thought?
I was just noting in the further on in the aim where it sort of says like demonstrating this sort of uh, you know, conservatism with our own funds in a way might be beneficial for the application.
That was the argument I was trying to make. Um and those are the sort of, you know, arbitrary numbers, but even them all up. Um but I just want to relative with the ARP funds in that first proposal, but I'm all for spending more uh more money and less town reserves. Ultimately, it will help the town.
Lindsay, do you have a, did that answer your question? Do you have further questions?
Yeah, no, I think that's good.
Okay. Um I'll leave the board to chew on while thinking about a proposal or a motion to make regarding any potential changes to that eighty-one-hundred-one-hundred formula. But uh it's an action item, so I want to open the floor up to the public. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this Dola grant opportunity now would be your op, now would be your opportunity. Uh catch our attention. You know the drill. Not seeing or hearing anything. So I will bring this back to the board um and seek, you know, further comments, questions. You guys want to look uh at adjusting those numbers or go with Chris's proposal of eighty-one-hundred-one-hundred ARP budget sewer reserves? Strong feelings one way or another?
I mean, for me, as long as we're taking a hundred from the operating budget, the other two numbers can be uh whatever town staff think is best.
All right. I I can we, you know, I suppose we can do a um, we can make a motion to apply for the Dola grant with the hundred from the operating budget and then as town staff sees fit regarding sewer reserves and ARP funding. If that meets with everyone's agreement.
I'll agree to that.
Yeah, I agree.
Eric, you want to make that formal motion?
Do we do we need to formally motion on this one? Yes. Um uh I I move that we approve staff applying for this Dola funding um with one hundred thousand dollars of matching funds from the operating budget and uh funds from ARP and from the sewer reserves to make up the rest for a seventy percent match to Dola's thirty percent.
I'll second that.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Miranda?
Trustee Danforth?
Yes.
Trustee Kumsesmao?
Yes.
Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Corvillan? Trustee Corvillan?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, Chris, best of luck on another grant application. And thanks for the presentation this evening.
Thank you. I I appreciate your consideration and and support.
All right. Well, moving on to another Chris Pelletier item, uh the OPR for the Safer Main Streets project. Take it away, Chris.
Thanks.
So this is a discussion item now. It's just to keep everyone in mind, this is discussion that would come, you know, so no actions to be taken henceforth.
Yes, this is a a draft OPR document and it's essentially documenting Netherlands' um planning process, which is going to, you know, we have a project. Um we have X amount of money to do this project, and so I've gone to um Netherlands Advisory Boards, SAP and ProSab and the DDA who's who's actually a partner in this project. And um we see their input. I've documented it in this in this document and um, you know, it's very sort of sixty dozen foot level. And you see the picture on the front of it. And there is no design. This is really helping to inform designer. All my ducks are in row. I'm ready to go into design. Now I just want to rate feedback from the various um advisory boards and to the BOT to get further uh feedback and then um finalize this document, bring it back and move on to design with with the hope of designing this project for the remainder of this year and then continuing the construction of it in the summer of twenty twenty-two. Um one uh thing I'd like to point out about this project is that it does exist entirely within CDOT's right of way. So there are limitations to um what I can do because they are a very professional organization. So, you know, do my best to push them um and think alternatively. But um what I presented to you tonight, I think is something that um they will allow. Um but I just whatever you guys decide, um you want to incorporate into this this document, just let me know. So um that's really it. I'll not take any question.
Thank you, Chris. I'm just curiosity. So do you think something like an upgraded uh crosswalk that is, you know, that that stamped concrete that's in here? Some kind of visual distinction is something CDOT might actually go for in this?
I do believe that, you know, I've been pushing him on that. Um there's lots of examples throughout the state um of this. Now, they may request that the town take ownership of it. Um maintain it. So um that's one thing to consider, but you know, concrete lasts a long time. Could last twenty years. Um so a lot longer than the stripes that exist on the road. Um but the advantage is they come and restripe it, but when they want.
Do they, they come restripe it? I I haven't seen proof of that.
Exactly. That is sort of the point of this.
Right, exactly. That's what I was gonna say is this would actually then kind of end that discussion and the, yeah. Our relationship with CDOT over at least two of the stri, you know, crosswalks in town.
That's the intention.
All right. Uh any questions from uh or comments regard from this regarding this from other trustees? Um Tanya?
Well, I was a, and I'm sure we've talked about this before, but how come uh we haven't really brought up the idea of an over the top of the highway crossing or under the bridge crossing for pedestrians? It seems like half of our traffic problems are people constantly crossing. We have one and then you're gonna bring back the second one, it looks like um over there on First Street and the Visitor Center, and that's where I'm talking about. Have you thought about putting a crosswalk underneath the bridge or under the, you know, by the river or above? I know that'd be expensive, but maybe we could use some of those, that ARP money or whatever for that. I think it would really help with traffic.
Yeah, so um we we have met with um CDOT representatives in the past about an underpass in the highway and using the sort of the creek box covert and it would have to be modified and and maybe even another box covert installed. And um we've been put on a list of projects, or at least on their radar so that when the funding, the correct funding is in place to to go for a project of that size, um we're kind of on their radar. So, yeah, we've talked about it and I would love to do that. Um it's a it's a much bigger project, probably take many years to do. Um but um that's the ultimate goal of pedestrians under the road. I totally agree.
Um so that's fully a CDOT project then? It's not nothing to do with us?
Yes.
Even though it's under the road?
Yeah, there's these imaginary boundaries, you know, on the edge of their road that and it's sort of kind of belongs to them.
Huh. So there's really no way to convince them to do that because it's they're not going to spend that kind of money?
No, there is a way to do it. It would just take time and that that funding has to be in place and and dedicated for that specific purpose. I mean, I believe there's gonna be more funding in the future for projects of that size and uh and hopefully we can do something like that. But you know, what I'm proposing tonight is it's pretty small.
Yeah, it's nice. I was just wondering, just to help. I mean, I know a lot of people have mentioned it, so. Um and I I like those pavers that you had the photos of. Those are really pretty. For the sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I like they're very pretty.
Thank you, Tanya. Trustee Danforth?
So in in the improved sidewalk or upgraded sidewalk section, what exactly would they be doing in that section?
They would be removing the soil down to the existing aggregate and in some places where the aggregate has been removed, we'd have to replace it. And then we'd put um pavers on top of the aggregate, which would provide a a stable base for pavers and then also a permeable area to receive um surface water. And um and and so that's that's what we'll be doing and we'd be installing pavers.
Okay. Oh, that's the permeable paper example that we see here.
Yeah, you know, one of the comments that were brought up, I think, was in ProSab was the uh uh making the projects all I had a loss of words, making them sort of match because we have this sort of mismatch of of sidewalks and different materials and and um
Provide continuity.
Continuity, thank you.
Yeah.
And uh and so the idea was, you know, there are pavers um in the tip project, you know, for the curb extensions and for the transition zones. And so we could use the same pavers for that. And then the um so that would help by continuity between the two make them seem like purpose. And then also um having the stamped uh crosswalk will also provide another level of sort of on purpose connectivity that makes everything look same, even though we're using different portions of funding.
Yeah. It looks great. Thank you.
Eric?
I had for this. I'm I'm very excited for the potential of stamped concrete crosswalk. I think that's gonna be huge help and, yeah, uh it would be great if we could find a find a paver that would work for both the tech project and this one. Provide that continuity and that kind of design consistency across town. I think it would it would really also just help the feel of navigating town, just feel like it's more consistent, like there's a clear pathway to go to rather than fractured and confused. So I think this is a a big step in the right direction.
Absolutely agree. Um I do have one just just question about the pavers, particularly the along the, you know, by the library and down the peak to peak there. Is there going to be anything more done to keep cars from driving on those pavers? You know, I, you know, so many times I see cars have pulled off and I'm worried if we put pavers on there and then we have cars driving on it, it's going to be damaged fairly quickly.
Yeah, so and that has been brought up and and there's a safety factor there as well, like, you know, having that pedestrian vehicle separation. We don't really have right there other than some green markers. So um yeah, want to explore that with CDOT. Um and so that's definitely a priority of the project, you know, what can we do? Can we put a planter there, a rain garden, maybe it could be a possibility scattered throughout the thing? Maybe a curb, maybe a raised curb along the thing. So I'm not exactly sure. Um but I'd like to address that um in the design. Um so as we as I felt draft design, I'll bring it to you guys and and uh and get your 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 weight in.
Sounds great.
Yeah, I really like the idea of rain gardens and curbs.
Yes.
What is the sort of the um, the, you know, what are the next steps? I mean, this is a discussion item this evening with the OPR. Uh does this kind of come back to us for approval at a as an action item?
Yeah, so if you had anything else that you wanted to put into this, um I would incorporate it into the OPR. I'd bring it back to you likely at a consent agenda, approve the um OPR and then I can move on to design.
Okay. Um, you know, I will throw this open. This is a discussion item this evening. Uh if anyone from the public has anything they'd like to uh throw out there for possible inclusion in the OPR, now be the chance to let us hear from you. Uh if you want to speak up. Uh, if you want to speak up, now be your chance, catch our attention. Hearing and seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Final thoughts from the Board of Trustees or just thank you, Chris, for, for running this project through the NPP and getting the input of the various boards, our various advisory boards and bringing it to us.
Great, my pleasure. I can't wait to.
Thank you very much.
Can't wait to do it.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, we will move forward then to our second discussion item this evening, which is with regards to the subdivision regulations. And I believe we have our town attorney on with us, Jennifer, to discuss what this means for the Board of Trustees and for town code.
Evening, Mayor, trustees. Can everybody, can you hear me?
Loud and clear, welcome.
Great. And so before you tonight is draft ordinance number eight twenty. And what this is, is a repeal and replacement of the subdivision regulations in the town. And this is a product of work of a subdivision committee. And that committee was consisted of two members of the planning commission, Karen Blakemore and also Roger Cornell and town staff. And we worked on this, on these regulations for about a period of six months. And refined the, the processes and what you have before you is those draft regulations. So municipalities have broad authority to adopt regulations governing the subdivision of parcels of land for development. And these are known as subdivision regulations. The subdivided land is defined as any parcel of land that has been divided into two or more parcels and is to be used is to be in compliance with other parts of town code such as zoning regulations. And these subdivision regulations before you are really process type regulations. So in other words, the regulations define different types of subdivisions and set forth what's necessary for those applications. And the review then of those applications and how the applications are approved, what criteria is assigned to those review process and who reviews those applications. And the reason for the rewrite of chapter seventeen, the subdivision regulations, is that there were identified some missing processes in the current town code. For example, a lot line adjustments. Those processes were missing, missing plat amendments, which could be a lot line dissolution, plat vacations and plaque corrections. So that's the reason why this, the subdivision changes were made. And it was really just easier to do a repeal and replace rather than go through and try to rewrite the existing code. I realize that there is a lot of information before you, you know, these subdivision regulations are fifty seven pages. But it is fairly consistent with what, what you have currently in the town code. There is more detail that's added. It should be easier for the planning commission to review these applications, understand what the criteria is. And also for you as a board of trustees to review these subdivision applications. So I'm going to open it up for any questions that you might have.
Okay, Lindsay, you get to start us off this time. Any questions?
I mean, it's, it's a lot to review with all of this. And this is, this is a discussion item for tonight, right?
It is, it is a discussion item, yes. And I do, I understand it is a lot of information. You know, if there's, if the Board of Trustees desires, we could schedule a work session to go over these subdivision regulations, but like I said, this, the subdivision committee went through these in quite some detail. And they are fairly consistent with current subdivision regulations with the addition of more detail and additional processes.
So apart from the addition of those four new processes, the lot line, the plat vacation, et cetera, et cetera. The rest, the, the pieces that are in there, the rest of the options for minor subdivision are essentially unchanged. Are there any that go, that are that, are there any changes to the current ones that then sidestep the Board of Trustees as the final voice of approval? Or is there anything here that becomes just administrative or?
Not as to the current processes that the town already has in place. So what the town has in place right now is a major subdivision process, a minor subdivision process. And there is also another, another process, it's kind of stuck in a section of the town. Yeah, I think it's, I think it is lot consolidation. I think you're right, Mayor. But it, it doesn't change any of those current processes. If we were to look at, let's see, it's, there's a handy table in the ordinance, which would actually be codified. So if we were to look at that table, that would, that lays out what is all required for all of the different processes in terms of notice, who reviews it and whether there's a public hearing that's required. So that table is, is actually very helpful.
And, and just those new, well, I mean, I guess the lot line adjustment and the plat correction are the only two new pieces that join lot consolidation as being administrative. Everything else would still require Board of Trustees and Planning Commission approval.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, okay, that's, I just really wanted to clear that up because that is kind of the big, or you know, the, the pinch attention risk of this is things happening outside the oversight process, but.
And, and just so you know, there is an appeal process, for example, for the plaque correction, applicant can appeal a decision to the Board of Trustees.
Right. Lindsay, did you have further questions or comments? I started to jump in on there on that, but.
Um, not at the moment.
Okay, Eric, I saw you on video.
I was wondering about the provisions for land dedication in major subdivisions and, and whether or not that's new?
That is not new. There is a land dedication process already in in the town code. And this section is actually pretty consistent with that process. It's, it's for residential property and it's for public land dedication.
Right, and it's twelve percent of major subdivisions.
Yes.
Or a payment in lieu of dedication.
Yes.
I'm, I'm not saying that, that I want to see this necessarily, but I just wanted to bring up the idea that we have since, at least since I've been on the BOT, we have form in the past for specifying the fund in which certain payments might go into. And I didn't see anything specific here unless I missed it about what fund payments in lieu of dedication would go into. And I thought maybe that's something that we could consider as a board when we eventually bring this to an action item. Unless I missed it in their attorney medicine.
It is, it's not in there. I'm just trying to think. Just off, off the off the cuff here as to whether there would be some fund that would be appropriate for this.
Well, it does specifically call out parks, so that, that, that interests me immediately as the Pro-SAB liaison. A sort of an opportunity here to maybe say, maybe there should be a parks fund and maybe this kind of, these kinds of payments should be going into that.
Mm-hmm. There is, this, this is an area that is regulated by state statute. And so before we were to make any changes as to create a, a new fund, I would like to take a look at that.
Yeah, that makes sense. But just, just something that I noticed that we have done it before with the, with the STR and it exists with the parking fund right now. And so just that we, that we may potentially be able to be more specific about how that money gets used in the future. My other questions were mostly related to the standards for approval and mostly the language in there that felt a little vague and a bit wishy-washy to me, I guess, which was specifically, you know, this is seventeen thirty-six and seventeen forty-seven, the standards for approval of a minor or major subdivision. And in section C, for instance, in seventeen thirty-six, it says that it should substantially conform to all other applicable requirements of the town's municipal code ordinances and resolutions. And I just wonder why it doesn't simply say conform. I don't know what substantially means in that context. And could we really approve something that did not conform to our own ordinances? That seems strange.
That's a great question and I'm trying to think of a scenario where we would want it to substantially conform as opposed to just conform to all other applicable requirements of the code.
Well, because I'll tell you, you know, what I'm reading in it is basically giving the BOT what I think is too much flexibility to approve things that might not actually align with either our policies, our ordinances or resolutions. And, and then it goes, and so my concern then is extends to E of that same section, which talks about conforming to the comprehensive plan, which gives even more outs for us to actually completely disregard the comprehensive plan. Specifically that, that notion that, that the goals and policies set forth are sufficiently specific to permit the planning commission or BOT to decide that such application of subdivision meets or fails to meet such goal or policy. And that, that language concerns me because I feel like we are building in essentially a way for us to ignore our comp plan and our way for us to ignore resolutions that we have made. If that suits maybe the individual in question who might be applying for a subdivision of, of a lot or indeed for any other thing that we might, any other code that we might pass in the future, which this language could then extend to. So that, this kind of language does concern me and I would prefer that we, that we just eliminate this notion of sufficiently specific from the comp plan requirements. But also that we remove the word substantially from, from C there. The proposed subdivision development should just simply conform to town municipal code ordinances and resolutions. Otherwise, I, I feel, it feels meaningless to pass municipal code ordinances and resolutions if they do not need to be followed.
I, I do understand your concern. As the lawyer for the Board of Trustees, I do like to have a little bit of leeway in terms of substantial conformance. You know, it's hard to say. I, I, I mean, I suppose that there could be a situation where it doesn't conform to all of the requirements and there's a condition that's imposed. And that condition satisfies impacts or concerns of residents for the lack of strict conformance.
That's an interesting one, just because again, I am on the Board of Trustees and I would prefer that my hands were more tied and that we simply went by the laws that we passed rather than, you know, try to kind of ease situations into existence that maybe shouldn't be because they don't actually conform with, I'm, I'm with, with our laws. So this is just something that I know this is a discussion item. I'm not trying to change it now. But I do want to say, I'm, I'm kind of reticent to pass this kind of language because I find it to set a precedent for the future and for future code revisions that, that concern me from a, from a democracy point of view. Where it becomes really just about a BOT's individual relationship with a particular property or landowner when they are attempting to, to make these modifications. And it becomes less about kind of the overall will of the people.
It does, you know, one thing to think about too along those lines is that what we are dealing with is property, is property here and property owners. And so it also gives perhaps some benefit to a property owner for development of property.
Indeed, it does. And in that exact same vein, I would say that it should be, the burden should be on the property owner to demonstrate that what they are trying to do is within the, the town's ordinances and regulations and indeed within the will of the people of the town of Netherland as a whole, rather than just their individual investment. And that is, that's my concern.
Yep, that's, that's a good one. I mean, it's definitely the sort of the philosophical crux of things like this, yeah. Did you have other, I mean, yeah, like you said, Eric, not to interrupt you, but you said this is a, you know, like you said, this is a discussion. And do you have any other points or things you wanted to highlight in there or?
I think for the most part, most of it seems very clear and very logical and the, the requirements are stringent, which I think they should be. And the, you know, the kind of the amount of documentation that's necessary seems to be well thought out. And making it, you know, kind of easier for the town to do the, the three kind of the three things there that were in the table that, you know, doesn't really need to be, be brought to the BOT. I completely agree with that aspect of it and I think that that is reasonable and proper. And that the rest of it still remain under the planning commission and BOT's purview. So the rest of it seems alright to me. It's just those standards for approval and that idea that maybe we want to get those dedication funds into a specific fund on the town side so that we can start to build up kind of an arsenal to maybe, maybe do something with parks.
Alright, thank you. Tanya?
Oh yeah, I totally agree with Eric about that substantially conforming. I think it should just say conform. I don't think we need to give any wiggle room or any more advantages to a developer in this situation. And then I wanted to refer back to the email that Karen Blakemore had sent everybody, which she kind of highlighted some major differences. And so she had said that a big difference now is that if development hasn't been started within three years, it has to, it's no longer valid and they have to go back to the planning commission. That, that, that makes a lot of sense to me. That would have come in handy for that PQ subdivision. But it also said that the the code before today said that there's an optional review after one year if a subdivision hasn't been started by the Board of Trustees and that in this new code, that's no longer an option. And I personally would like to add that optional review back into the language. Why did you guys take that out?
Well, so actually the current code does have that if the subdivision agreement. If the subdivision agreement. Um, if no subdivision agreement has been executed, no construction of required improvements initiated. Or no building permits issued within twelve months, then there is that, that optional review that's in the current code. But then the new, so what we just, we replaced it with the other language, which is the mandatory. Um, cancellation of the subdivision approval after three years. So it was really replacing that piece of it.
Yeah, but it's totally different. I mean, one is in a year and one is three years. It was just because you thought a year is not enough. Time. I mean, it's an optional review means that. When that, that means the Board of Trustees decides or they decide. When there's an optional review.
Well, it would be that the Board of Trustees or Planning Commission has to bring the item, um, back before.
But it, it's not mandatory. It's just if somebody thought that it should.
Yeah, that can be added back in.
Yeah, I just feel like, why take it away? It sounds like a good. Tool perhaps if some, if things have changed substantially or, you know. It's, it's. That's just my opinion on that. Um. Just don't see, it's totally different. Once three years, it's completely null. Which is fine with me. And then the other one is just a review to be able to talk to the developer and be like, well, what's going on and. See if it still fits in with the town vision. Um, that's just my opinion on that.
Yep.
And, um, I appreciated that email from Karen. It really was clear. Help clarify some of the major changes. I'm not, I don't know if you read it, um. But if there's any other major changes that we should be aware of. That aren't in this email, it'd be great to get some more information before this comes back to the board. Um, that's my only thought. And again, I want, I totally agree with Eric about the substantial word.
Thank you, Tanya. You know, actually, I just want to take, I, I do have one more question, but I want to take this opportunity. I really want to thank, because I see Karen, you're on here. Karen Blakemore, thank you for, for volunteering to do this along with Roger and with town, you know, town staff. Thank you for stepping up to, to work this because I know work, reworking entire chapters and looking at that is not an easy task in the town code. So, so thank you for having done that for us.
Oh, oh, you're welcome. And it was a long tedious job. But we did our best on it.
Yeah, I think you guys have done a great job. I think, you know, as you hear with the discussion, there's a few, few things that we want to look at as this comes back as action. But I have one question and I think this might be for, um. Uh, for you, Jennifer. And it's just one of these weird little things I happened to catch in here was, you know. Under major activity notice, it says if there's a subdivision that's over five acres in land. Then we have to notify the county and the state geologist. Um, but it doesn't say if they actually approve it. I, I was just wondering, are we, do they have any say over subdivisions of that size within the town of Netherland? Or are we just notifying them and saying, hey, we're doing this and that doesn't really do anything?
Um, I know exactly what you're talking about. I'd want to pull up the state statute to see exactly. What it says.
And I mean, this is, this is a minor thing. I was just, it was just one of those curiosity things that caught my eye. Wondering if it's the type of thing where the state geologist then can say no. Um, or the Boulder County Commissioners can say no to a subdivision within the town of Netherland. Um, which I hadn't, had never caught my eye or hadn't seen that kind of thing before. So I'll let you, you go ahead and you can look that up. And I want to throw this open also to public comment here. Um, if anyone does have public comment on this, this would be your opportunity to speak on this. Again, I am neither hearing nor seeing anyone. So we'll come back to the Board of Trustees.
So the, the state statute doesn't provide that the state geologist or the county has any discretion or weigh in. In terms of approval of the subdivision. Um, I'm trying to look at what potentially they could ask for. You know, related to conditions or considerations by the planning commissioner or the Board of Trustees.
Yeah, and it's nothing we need to worry about right now. It's just one of those things that maybe we'll. As it comes back as an action item, uh, if we can just, just to know whether, what, what that kind of means and what that's in there for. Any other comments or questions from the board? If not, I guess we will look forward to seeing this come back to us as an action item in the coming months to replace chapter seventeen.
Do, is there sufficient, uh. Direction from us in terms of the kinds of changes we'd like to see here, or do we need to do a work session on this? Um, I guess I don't know who I'm asking, just because.
Jennifer, I think. Yeah.
Just because.
I think it would be, it, it would be helpful to hear from, um, Mayor Larson. And trustee Danforth in terms of your thoughts on, um, the. Changes suggested by trustee Kims Ismael and, um.
I actually think, I, I was actually going to jump on what Eric said there because, you know, replacing an entire chapter of town code while. Majority of this chapter will essentially be unchanged. I actually think maybe, well, and the fact that we're missing three trustees here tonight, uh, nearly the majority of the board. I think actually a work session to go through that and have a chance to discuss it among ourselves might be the best way to handle that. And so, you know, kind of highlighting those changes that Eric and Tanya were talking about, uh, for a work session might be a good next step. Uh, particularly if we can get Julian and Alan and Jonathan involved in that discussion. I don't, I just don't really want us to be the four making, you know, those kinds of decisions when we are a slight majority of the board.
Well, we can do it. We can definitely bring it back at a work session.
And I think, I mean, I think it would. Open a conversation, especially in regards to these standards for approval here, just because. You know, we've had some, uh, very similar sorts of applications come before us before. Where it's, it has seemed to me that our code does not really clarify what the role of the comp plan is in town code. Like, and it seems to be something we can either use if we want to use it or ignore it if we want to ignore it. And I would really like to kind of clarify that. And I think this is a good place to maybe start, just because it's specifically called out. In these standards of approval. Not that this is the most important place that it's called out in town code. But that, that this gives us an opportunity, I think, to really state very clearly how the comprehensive plan should be used. When a value of bidding application.
That, that makes perfect sense. Um, and along those lines, subdivision is the very first step in developing land. And, um, so, you know, conversation about how the comp plan affects subdivision is, would be worthwhile.
All right. Uh, well, we can work, uh, work with town staff and figure out when a good night for that work session is where we can have. A good attendance from the Board of Trustees.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, that completes the bulk of our agenda tonight. We are now into our staff and trustee reports. And so we will throw this to our, uh, temporarily, well, actually this will be your last. Is it?
Yeah, it'll be my last one.
Administrator report. Yes. All right, Miranda.
Big moment. Um, so I, I, I believe when I interviewed, I know I spoke to this, but every Thursday we send out thankful Thursday messages. So for town staff accolades, I think my thought was to share those with the board. And so the ones that went out this month are for Jennifer Landon, who is on this call too tonight, and Rita Six. Uh, Jen Landon completed her distributions to exam. Which is kind of just another certificate to hang on the wall of accomplishments for. The wastewater or the water and wastewater utility team. So I'm just really want to highlight how hard Jen works. I mean, she's, she's a supervisor of those facilities who maintains an incredibly important role. Um, really helping her team be successful, guiding them through and, and. Inspiring them also professionally by getting her own exams and helping them to pass theirs. So big shout out to Jen. And then the others is Rita. Rita finished the financial audit, which is a huge undertaking and she's done an amazing job. Of helping us complete that. And then while also moving on to the budget. So I just want to really thank Rita for all the cheese time. Shout out came from Karen and I definitely echo that. Just a reminder about the budget. We are heading into that budget season. Uh, so the next thing to happen will be, we'll release our public charrette YouTube video on the thirty-first of August. And then we'll start to head into those work sessions. As a reminder, we're still looking for board members to participate in a finance subcommittee. So if you're interested in that, uh, please email us and let us know. I put a ton of information on COVID in here, so I just kind of just want to hit. The unfortunate highlight, which I'll scroll to here, is that the numbers are rising. As of last week, we were at forty point six cases per day and we're continuing to see a steady increase in that. Um, so here in Netherland, what we're doing is we have some vaccination clinics. Um, there was one last week, but we will still have some more at the farmer's market and that we are encouraging people to go to. There's been a lot of questions too about indoor mask orders. Currently, the Boulder County Public Health has only issued orders for like childcare facilities. For individuals to and older. Uh, there was a call today though, where Boulder County Public Health is looking into a health order. That would require indoor masking, um, for all, uh, municipalities within the county. And so we'll see that. Uh, potentially come out in the next few weeks and I'll keep the board updated on how that unfolds. Um, but, but the feeling amongst town and quickly meeting with Mayor Larson is that it is, we like to try and align with Boulder County. And so we'd be looking to them to help guide us on next steps. And I, like I said, I'll, I'll incorporate the board into that. In terms of the Netherland Interagency Council on Homeless Encampments, uh, there was, their outreach coordinator did have to resign. But luckily Henry Schliff has stepped up. So I provided just some statistics about. How many people they've helped this year. There is a pretty big decrease in the number of campers. Uh, but they're still doing really amazing work, trying to connect people with the resources that they need. The caller resiliency office peer exchange, we are teamed up with, uh, SS Park. And Gunnison as, as, as part of a kind of peer exchange where we can discuss. Uh, ways in which our community is approaching recovery and resiliency. And so that's, we're going to start having those meetings in the next few weeks and I'm looking forward to that. We also have our roadmap to recovery meetings. Um, and so the initial meeting is scheduled for August twenty-fourth, where we again will continue to talk about efforts related to recovery and resilience. Town clerk updates. So we received four applications for the town clerk position. Uh, most were pretty new to the field. So after talking with Mayor Larson, um, and amongst the hiring committee. We felt it was best to start with a deputy town clerk, who will then be trained to be a town clerk. And brought before the board for that official appointment in ideally six to nine months. So Mafie Calagueres, who's a part of our current team with the Parks Department, was the top candidate. She is local and she's been with us in parks since June, but we'll start in the role on August thirtieth. And I look forward to introducing her to you at a future meeting. Over the last thirty days, we've issued thirteen new, uh, and renewed business licenses. I'm working on the liquor license renewal for backcountry. We've done thirteen building permits. I've fulfilled five core requests, which I've outlined here. And then we're also still working on special events with the ones coming up being the Ned Ned Race and Buff Classic, as well as. The Netherland Area Historical Society doing a heritage days. As many of you know, two weekends ago, we did have Ned Gravel Bike Race, um, which was a, a large event that was. Overall, pretty successful. We did have some lessons learned and talked with the event organizers about some future changes. And they are planning to come back again next year with a modified event. And that's my report in a nutshell, if there are questions.
Thank you, Miranda. Any questions for our outgoing deputy town administrator? Town clerk too, but you know. All right. Moving along, uh, next up we have our town.
I did have one thing there.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Eric.
Couldn't click fast enough. Uh, I just wanted to say one thing about niche. Um, and while I, I recognize that there, that they, that they do seem to be potentially less campers. I don't think it's as few as are being served right now, who are out there and potentially. Need to be spoken to, uh, in terms of folks camping. I was, uh, out recently to some. To some sites that I know are, are frequented by folks who generally require some kind of services. And there were, there were some disturbing scenes out there, um, out in the woods of. You know, especially regarding human waste, which, um, you know, is constantly a problem, but it was quite dramatic. And so, and there are definitely people in undesigned sites who, uh, who should be reached out to. So. I think that niche, uh, is, is potentially less aggressive in their outreach as they have been in the past, uh, when Claudia was. The person doing the outreach work there and while Hanson was at the church. And I think that that could explain the, the, the decrease. In people served, uh, just as much as any kind of reduction in actual campers might. That just wanted to point that out, that I don't think this is a problem that is going away.
Trustee Kims Ismael, would you be able to email me and Marshall Johns about that area that you were in and so we can connect them with him? And make sure they're aware.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, next up, town treasurer report. Rita.
Good evening, mayor, trustees and members of the public. Before I get started with my financials, I did want to let you know that. I did receive found copies of the audit, the twenty twenty audit report. So if you're interested in one of those, please stop by town hall. July's financials show an increase in the actual fund balances in most of the funds. In the general fund, um, the increase in the actual fund balance, uh, is equals three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Mainly that's due to, uh, just like last month, receiving, uh, the ARP funds of the hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Also, sales tax revenue represents a twenty-four percent increase over the budgeted amount. And use tax equals a ninety-nine percent increase or twenty-four thousand over the budgeted amount. Year-to-date budgeted amount for use tax, um, is at fifty-two thousand and we have received almost fifty thousand as of July. In the community center fund, the actual fund balance equals an increase of sixty-three thousand dollars. And in the water fund, the overall change in the actual fund balance equal, equals an increase of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Um, care fees, um, are a big part of that. They are, we've received a hundred and seven thousand. Which is a hundred and forty-seven percent of the budgeted amount as of July. We have budgeted for the year seventy-four thousand and therefore, um, that's thirty-two thousand higher. Um, than the budgeted amount as of July. Let's see. The sewer fund is the only fund that we are showing a decrease of fifty-nine thousand dollars. However, that, the reason for that is we had a loan payment that was made. Um, in July, but budgeted in August of fifty-nine thousand dollars. Free funds shows an increase of twenty-one thousand dollars in the actual fund balances. The Health and Human Services Fund, we have received, um, almost six thousand dollars so far. Which the budgeted amount for the year is six thousand, so we're almost there. No expenses have incurred yet in the Health and Human Services Fund. And the last one in the Conservation Trust Fund, uh, the overall change in the actual fund balance equals an increase of twenty five hundred dollars. That's it.
Thank you, Rita, and congratulations on the audit.
Thank you.
Any question? And actually, you know, I I meant to do this during Miranda's because I see you're on here still. Jennifer, congratulations on on your new certification as well. I, I, you've been hanging out here this whole evening and I wanted to make sure we thanked you in person for, for pushing, pushing through that for, you know, your service for the town of Ned. Anyone have any questions for Rita regarding the budget? Alright, thank you, Rita. Marshall Johns.
Uh, good evening, trustees. Appreciate being able to come to you guys again. Uh, real quick, hit through some of these things, Miranda. When they hadn't covered some of them already that were in my report, so uh we'll skip that. Uh, anyway, surrounding the coresponders, I did reach out to Sheriff Pelley and they're not able to fund or partially fund a coresponder position with us this year. Um, right now, the Boulder County, not the sheriff's office, is actually funding the coresponder program that we are using or we're able to use. So that's not going to be an opportunity to get any money from them. Ms. Hall said that there could be some potential grant funding money out there. Um, I have yet to mail a look into that. Uh, we will be providing some information for next year's budget to see if uh the coresponder program is something that the BOT does want to move forward with and see what that may or may not look like. Uh, we had a really friendly but intoxicated male run through town last week or the week before. Uh, but unfortunately, he helped himself to a few things here in the shopping center, one being a thousand dollar guitar from Brightwood Music. Uh, they were able to get some information out on social media relatively quickly and somebody spotted the uh our suspect over at the Black Forest. Um, so anyway, Officer Hendricks made contact. We were able to take him into custody with his shiny thousand guitar thousand dollar guitar and get that returned to Brightwood. So, um, which I believe they sold that uh this week or last week or over the weekend, something to that effect. So nice that they got that back. Um, ultimately, he was served a summons for a first degree misdemeanor and transported to detox. That's not at this point in time, a, a arrestable offense to lodge somebody into the jail on unless, um, excuse me. Unless there was something else going on, he was being disorderly or something like that. So just want to clear, clear that up in case there's any questions on that. Uh, we also did a search of several of the wooded areas around here for a local homeless man who I'm sure everybody knows by face, uh, may not know by name, but uh there was concern because he'd been gone about five days. So we checked all the areas we believed him to frequent or potentially hang out at, and we turned up nothing. Uh, the following weekend, he was found walking up Boulder Canyon and Sergeant Jen stumbled upon him and gave him a ride back to town. He was down in Boulder for about a week, uh, doing some work and hanging out there and actually got robbed while he was down there or had his duffel bag stolen from him. Uh, PD took a report on a stolen pickup truck um out on the side of the mine shaft. Uh, things just didn't really sound right from the get go and I drove around and located the truck in front of Peak Wine and Spirits just as it was described with the keys in the ignition wallet in the uh dash console. So appears that there was just uh confusion as to where it was parked at. If you have not heard, the Forest Service and Boulder Sheriff lifted their fire van. So that's back in effect. Uh, let's hope for some moisture and not too windy weather. Uh, there was discussion with former Chief Dur regarding Netherlands coinciding our fire ban when we do have one with the sheriff's office so that it's uniform across the board. Uh, we haven't done that in the past just because of the way the sheriff's office ban reads as far as unincorporated property. Um, but at that time, Chief Dur felt that it was important to try to stay um consistent across the board so that they, their staff could consistently enforce. And it makes sense. Um, although I do have a bit of an issue with uh not allowing people to have a fire at their own property if, if the uh conditions are, you know, not extreme. So anyway, we, we can work with them to uh to do what's best for town. Um, not sure if anybody's noticed, but we've tried to do some additional traffic control in Big Springs. Um, I was met with uh one person that wasn't too happy about it and I was told we should be ticketing the tourists. In the last month's time, we've had two separate uh people that surrendered their guns to us. Temporary surrender, actually, one of them uh was taken during a welfare check. And we were unable to secure the house or locate um any other adult. Uh, one adult that was there was uh incapacitated and we were unable to secure the house. So the guns were temporarily seized. Uh, they have been returned to the owner. In the other case, um, somebody brought guns to us because they were feeling unsafe with themselves. So I don't generally like to do that, but we will do it in these kind of conditions. Next month, I'm actually going to be providing an in, a report on the guns that we do have in our evidence locker that have been there for some of them for twenty years. So we're, we're making some serious headway on that. Just a note coming up. Uh, Miranda hit on the gravel bike race. That went well. All in all, there's some things that we can do better next year. Uh, we followed up to make sure everybody made it home safe, found the last, I found the last riders coming back in six to seven hours after they left. Um, I want to talk about this story that uh Channel Four did on the crime rate in Denver. As you see, there's a link if anybody looked onto it, but it's pretty significant. Um, I don't know that I would feel overly safe being in the low do area or downtown area. It's pretty crazy. Um, it just speaks to itself, but I came across that and I just wanted to push that out. Some people are news hounds and some people aren't. Uh, so for those who are not, here's some specific information. Uh, I want to talk about real quick, the um Bola wraps that we had purchased. We're waiting for Eric to come back from baby leave and then we're going to be doing a training on those. Uh, Fox thirty one contacted us and some other agencies in the front range and they're going to do a story on them. Uh, I'd like one or some or all BOT members, if anybody's interested to come to the training and just see what they do or can do and what potential they may have. Um, they're not a BL end all tool, but they have the ability, I believe, to um be used in certain circumstances and uh potentially safely take somebody into custody and not have a big wrestling match. Uh, let's talk about some things that I like to speak about when I say doing good things in the community. We did uh two lockout assists all the way at the top of the Fourth of July Trailhead, as you can imagine, for those people who locked their keys in their car. They were very thankful that uh we were able to rescue them, so to speak. Had a couple of other groups that were uh somewhat stranded around the Hesse Trailhead and uh, we helped them. Again, very thankful. Uh, we rescued a baby goose and a baby raccoon as you'll probably see the picture of recently. Got those to a animal rehab center with the help of Boulder County Sheriff's Office Animal Control. Um, want to say thanks to Mark Stringfellow. He obtained some emergency bus passes. Uh, Sergeant Fine Levin was involved in that and uh they were able to, he was able to secure him somehow. And then a quick shout out to Sergeant Fine Levin. Uh, she helped a local man here in town who's having some transportation issues and uh lost his phone. He was unable to communicate with his boss. She actually bought him a track phone with her own money to uh help him stay employed. So pretty awesome of her to do that. And lastly, congratulations to Eric and his wife. Uh, they had a new baby girl on July twenty fifth and she is healthy and we're all thankful. That is my report.
Chief, uh, note from experience, lots of interesting animal experiences this week or this month. Um, but I just wanted to go back to the, uh, you're looking for BOT volunteers to uh to assist with that Bola rap training, huh? Uh, you're looking for uh volunteers to be running away from the police?
I'm sorry. Uh, so volunteers would be good, but no, we don't actually need volunteers. But if anybody wants to volunteer, that'd be great. More of just being present and um observing um how this thing works. It's, it's as Batman as it gets, if I could describe it as that. Um, they don't hurt. They're not generally harmful. Of course, you know, an accident could happen, but um they're not designed like that. So um I would not be fearful. I, I've not had been wrapped yet, but uh Officer Hendricks and Sergeant Fine Levin both went through the training and so they both were. So yeah, anybody that's interested in jumping in or observing, uh, definitely don't have to be here for the full thing, but if you're interested, that would be awesome.
Alright, any other questions for the Marshall?
Is there a way to reimburse um Fine Levin for her personal funds that were used to purchase that phone?
Yeah, there absolutely is. And my comment to her was get me the receipt. And it was, it's not a big deal. So I will try to prod her for a receipt. Um, but yes, we do have that ability because we, we do have a little bit of uh cash funds available for goodwill and things like that when it's appropriate. And uh, you know, we'll, we'll always do the right thing when we have the opportunity to.
That's wonderful.
Anything else? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our public works manager, Chris. Welcome back.
Thank you. Um, I, I really don't have much to add. Uh, public work is busy with parks and streets and and everything. Um, I actually don't really have that many employees right now. I'm having a hard time keeping employees and hiring people and um, it's been, it's been strange, but yeah, so we're, I'm super busy, you know, happy to answer any questions if you have.
Chris, any questions for, for Chris?
Only uh just to reiterate that if there's anything that the BOT can do to help with the kind of never ending employee shortage. I know it's not something that only Netherlands is dealing with. Right? But if there's, if there's kind of a clear strategy that you see that we're not implementing besides just offering tons and tons of money in terms of wages, um, then definitely let us know so that we can, we can implement it.
Yeah, we're talking amongst ourselves and trying to come up with strategies and, and of course, money helps, but I don't think it's always really about money. So I um, yeah, so thanks for that. And uh, when we have some um ideas, well, we'll bring them to you.
Thank you, Chris. I believe that is all our staff reports for this evening. Uh, we will move into Board of Trustees. Mine is in the report. Uh, I majority of it is the testimony I gave before the Congressional Redistricting Committee hearing in Boulder last week. It was very well received. They had lots of questions uh that I've been doing some follow up with that commission on. Of course, the day after that hearing, the census data was released and there's a, a lot of variation that's going to happen. So basically, look forward to them doing this again in a month and I'll go back down and testify again if needed uh on behalf of the town. But uh, that process, we're just going to keep on top of it and try to remain uh with our partners along the peak to peak region and within Boulder County on in CD, well, CD two in all likelihood, but stay with Boulder County in whatever congressional district that ends up being. So, uh, Eric, trustee Corvall, or trustee, trustee Eric, whom's Ismail report?
My report is that I was unable to attend the meetings that I was supposed to attend um over this past month due to an unfortunate uh family emergency. But that I do know that the Boulder County Boulder County Consortium of Cities, so it was a tough one, uh, did meet to discuss the, the notion of economic vitality. And I just, um, I should have asked her this before, but Miranda, were you able to attend that meeting?
Yeah, I was able to attend. Sorry, I should have added it to my report. So in the meeting, what they did is they asked a series of different municipalities to come forward and do presentations on their economic vitality programs and the ways in which uh, a lot of them is their chambers are supporting their business district. Uh, I think with the consortium of cities, trustee Kumbz Ismael has noted this before. It often is larger municipalities and not everything carries over to Netherlands and on our communities' needs. Um, but what was presented that night is an ongoing conversation that occurs every Friday. Um, and so as, as there is more to offer in terms of potentially some, some incentives or programs, my intention would be to bring that back to the board and the DDA for consideration.
And thank you, Miranda, for doing my report for me. And that is all I have to report.
Alright, well, thank you for the tag team approach. Uh, trustee Corvall, do you have anything, uh, anything else to report or anything to report?
No, I, I don't. There hasn't really been a ECO pass meeting that I've been aware of for a while. I feel like we're overdue. But I don't know. And I have nothing to report. Sorry.
Uh, no, thank you. Uh, trustee Danforth, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Alright. Any other business? Anyone want to bring up anything before we call it an evening?
Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Hey, it's Larry. Um, I meant to mention, um, earlier when Chris was talking about the um crosswalks and stuff like that and uh trustee Corvall was speaking about uh pedestrian traffic and traffic flow there and bridges and things like that. Um, I got on order a couple of sandwich board signs that are going to go um where the old crosswalk was from the rock shop across to Tungsten's Village there or Tungsten Square. And basically, they just say, don't cross here. And they got a little no, no walk cross person and an arrow directing them uh to the south to cross at the crosswalk to try to keep some traffic flowing a little bit better. So if we can just get everybody across in one spot, then hopefully cars won't stop every time they see somebody getting ready to cross during our heavy weekend traffic. And I don't know if it's going to fix the problem, but I hope it helps out a little bit.
Alright, thanks, thanks for that. Well, yeah, so we're not surprised when we see them show up.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright, thank you, Larry. Trustees, any other business?
I do have one thing that just like, well, I guess this could have been said in the context of a report, but um, I don't know if anyone, if you guys discussed in the last meeting, but the Mountain Forum for Pieces yard sale was a um, kind of in really raging success financially speaking, um, almost disturbing, uh, considering what that means for the amount of excess uh, uh, stuff that people have. I, I, I think that we made over seventeen thousand dollars in sales, uh, which blows all previous records out of the water for a three day uh, community yard sale worked entirely by volunteers selling things for, you know, one dollar, two dollar, five dollars a piece, uh, seventeen thousand is is quite a haul. And um, it did also kind of make me think that our ARM funds and other COVID relief funds and maybe our, the surplus revenues that we're getting that we keep hearing about it in, in, on all of Rita's reports, then it might be time to really, as a board, seriously consider what we're going to do. what we're going to do about the uh, the outbuildings in the west wing of the community center. How are we going to approach getting those, I think, back on track? Because I do, don't, don't think they are on track at the moment. And um, you know, some of the, the state of some of it is um, really demoralizing, actually, to work in there on a regular basis. And so I think that it's, it's high time that we started to find a way uh, to make, to make those buildings actually do um, what we need them to do for the community rather than uh, the, people have been making them work in kind of amazing ways, uh, in ways that they probably shouldn't work, right? In ways that are probably honestly not safe. And I think it's time that we address that. So with some of this money that we have kind of floating around, I hope that um, maybe we can have some conversations over the next few months about how we might uh, how we might address those issues at the community center.
Trusty Kooms Ismail, it's Miranda. Um, I actually came across some grant funding that may be able to address the west wing. I have not had a chance to talk with Dawn about it because she just came back from vacation. Uh, but it's a pretty lofty grant. Some award amounts could be upwards to $5 million. Um, and so.
That's what we're going to need.
Yeah, I'd like to bring that before the board. Um, obviously sooner rather than later, the grant application, I believe, this, the preliminary interest is due October 1st. And so my intent, I, I anticipate bringing this back before the board the first meeting in September for that initial discussion, but of course, want to connect with Dawn first. Um, but that's, I think this will be potentially a great opportunity for town if awarded to start to tackle that west wing.
For sure. And I think even now that there's a grant opportunity that seems so close, I think that uh, the board having some clarity on what exactly they would do with $5 million in the community center um, would also be really important that we're not just kind of shooting in the dark.
Yeah, absolutely. And so of course, there's not enough time to pull together, you know, engineered drawings. But the nice thing is there's that preliminary interest and then I believe it's an additional couple of months to get all of the application material together.
Great.
Anything else from anyone?
I, I just wanted to piggyback on that. Um, could we have a discussion as to uh, like what it looks like now, what it looked like before it, I imagine the problem started with the roof collapsing? And what are some of the ideas that we have for that area?
Yeah, so I, I would love to bring this on, on the seventh to have that conversation, present the grant opportunity to you. In essence, what needs to happen is, is the creation of spaces for Health Human Services artists. Um, you know, different industry types need to come out of that. And so I'd love to have that conversation with the Board of Trustees and then bring back um, at the second meeting in September, what that initial proposal of interest would look like for the grant itself.
Okay, this is Dawn and I am on the call. I am back from vacation. Hi, everybody. And wow, I'm really looking forward to that discussion. And um, for, just so the Board of Trustees knows, there is the site plan that was done. And so we do have a, a basis to start from for application for that grant. So look forward to the conversation very, very much. Thank you.
Alright, I think there's a lot of interest in that. Um, thanks, Miranda, for bringing that forward. I know you and I had talked about that and I think it's definitely something we want to pursue with that step one and then uh, look at what it's going to take to pull together a competitive proposal. Any other business or emotion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to adjourn. Miranda.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trusty Danforth.
Yes.
Trusty Corvall. Trusty Corvall.
Yes.
May, uh, Trusty Kooms Ismail.
Yes.
And at 10, 9:54 PM, the meeting is so adjourned. Thank you, guys. Thank everyone for coming out tonight. Talk to you all again soon and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mayor.